Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our July 11th board meeting. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting. And I'm going to apologize in advance only from the standpoint that we have air conditioning, but because of the noise level, we need to turn the air conditioning off for the meeting because it interferes with the microphone and the recording. So again, my apologies because it will get warm, and it's going to get warmer quickly. I'd like to start off the pledge allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on one page under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to our first presentation, I would just like to make a special announcement for this evening. Today was a sad day. We lost one of our firefighters just recently who died and passed away, John McGuire. The ceremony, the wake, was last night. The ceremony was today. A very moving ceremony with lots of fire companies. So I'd just like to briefly read a short eulogy in reference to John. And this is about service before self. These three words speak volumes about one's personal beliefs, decision-making, and commitment to a specific cause. In some cases, they're attached to a tragic event or another individual, John McGuire. But in every case, they represent the highest level of commitment that anybody can ask of any individual. John has personally put his life on the line to protect our respective communities and in the most effective and efficient manner ever possible. John stood out in the fire department. He served several fire departments during his tenure and represented them in a very professional manner at all times. John's willingness to perform was never in question. Service before self is just not a catchphrase. It's a lifestyle. It's a characteristic of truly dedicated individuals, and it's their purest representation of brotherhood and sisterhood. To John McGuire and his family, John always put service before self. I want to say thank you, for he raised the bar for all of us. God bless John McGuire. Thank you. Next presentation, Joel Tyner, town legislator. How are you doing, Joel?
I'm good. I apologize I wasn't able to make it to that ceremony. I knew Mr. McGuire a little bit. So I wanted to start out with a little bit of good news. There we go. You know, they say the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Last night, a resolution passed unanimously, not the one you're all thinking about. The one about creating a Dutchess County Special Needs Transportation Task Force. And up until a month ago, there was no talk whatsoever about that. And I had helped bring to the fore the fact that there are a lot of people using walkers and canes who would be stranded for the county takeover of city bus service. So I'm glad people listened. And that resolution passed unanimously to create a new Dutchess County Special Needs Transportation Task Force. So I just thought I'd point that out. One of the things that I just handed to you is a letter from June 22nd. There's been so much media coverage about this, I just want you folks, anybody in the room, to be aware. I took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution and the laws of this country and the state of New York. It's, the last time I was here was before June 22nd, but I knew that it was a violation of Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Law. So the taxpayer, I knew that the taxpayers of Rhinebeck and Clinton would be subject to, even here in the village, paying higher taxes to defend the county against an illegal action. So I'm just, I just urge you to please read that, because it just sets it out chapter and verse how unfortunately it was set in motion for five years and it was illegal. So I just thought I'd point that out. I wanted to invite everybody to Repair Cafe that we're doing the next one. It's, I think it's our 19th with Kathleen Everett. It's going to be Saturday, August 12th, from noon to 4:00 PM, or across the way at Rhinebeck Town Hall. Jewelry is going to be repaired. Sometimes we have the jewelry repair coach, Barbara Eichen. Sometimes we don't. She's going to be here with us on August 12th. And that's lamps, all sorts of electrical appliances, you name it, stuff getting fixed. Jeff Irish of Hudson Solar is here. He knows this, Gary, you know this. For a couple of years, I tried to get a community solar project going here in town. Had a couple of meetings that even Jeff, or you might have come to, but Jeff is actually doing it. So I wasn't able to get to the first one at the Star Library, but I just wanted to give a pitch. I, you know, my mom's a widow. I still live with my mom and my wife in the town of Clinton. We are trying to get involved with the Hudson Solar Community Solar Project. So the more that all of us join that, the less we have to deal with toxic sources of energy, like the Cricket Valley Plant in Dover, which is an explosion waiting to happen, the Weyonda Plant, the CBB Plant. So I just thought I'd put that out there. The last thing I thought I'd mention is Kathy Verratti mentioned to me recently that when it comes to people here in the town, people here in the village, she would really like it, she asked me to reach out to you, and I'll reach out to folks at Town Hall to see if maybe, and I know the cots that are here in this building, I think are the, I guess are the fire folks' cots necessarily maybe cannot be used for emergency, but during a catastrophe a couple of years ago, she and her teenage daughter were forced to sleep on the floor at Town Hall. So maybe if there's some way the county can help the town, the town can help the village, something, so that when disaster befalls a family here in Rhinebeck, you don't have a mom and her teenage daughter forced to sleep on the floor at Town Hall. So I'm doing a forum on that issue and a number of other issues. That's going to be Thursday, July 27th, 5:30 PM, across the way at Town Hall. It frustrates me to no end that I went to the senior picnic in Tibbely, and you know, Dr. George Verilli, the Red Hook, you know, youth community center is happening. And Mr. Mayor, I think you and I and your daughter walked about a decade ago to try to fulfill John Honey's dream of a teen center. And I just think that instead of frankly, a quarter billion dollar jail expansion that we don't need, that we can still put the brakes on and lower the size of, wouldn't it be nice if our county government helped create those youth centers and teen centers like New Polis has had for a decade or two, like Red Hook now has? Wouldn't it be nice if that was happening in Rhinebeck? I'm not going to go through this whole long list. I'll just say one other thing. There are a lot of good Democrats and Republicans talking about heroin and opiate abuse. I know families right here in the village who have been impacted by this. I got a bunch of my colleagues to sign onto a letter last summer saying Dutchess County should join PAARI, the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative, so that, and there's 160 police departments all over the country signed on, even I talked to the Republican sheriff from Broome County. This is making sure that people who are nonviolent drug addicts don't get arrested and put in jail. And it's the law enforcement. And I'm just, I just put it out there, the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative, P-A-A-R-I-U-S-A.org. I'd like to see the village police here in Rhinebeck join up. I'd like to see the Dutchess County Sheriff in Dutchess County. For about a year now, I've been pushing the county legislature. I have my caucus onboard, but I could use your help on that. That's P-A-A-R-I-U-S-A.org. It started with the police chief in Gloucester, Massachusetts. There's, I'm not going to take the time here to rebut a lot of garbage that's been thrown at me in the last five weeks. Just please feel free to call me. 876-2488. My cellphone is 464-2245. My wife is Jewish. My brother is Jewish. Basically, I'm almost, my whole entire family is Jewish. Don't believe the hype. Call me to get the direct story. 876-2488.
Thank you, Joel. Yes? Our next presentation is on some recent changes in New York State and in community solar, represented by President of Hudson Solar, Jeff Irish.
My name is Jeff Irish. I am the president and owner of Hudson Solar. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in New York State, and I'm an active participant with the New York State Public Service Commission on the Interconnection Policy Working Group to develop interconnection policies for New York State with regards to solar. So I'm here tonight to talk about an exciting new concept. It's a thing called community solar. I installed what was the first solar system on one of my barns in 2002. It was only the ninth system in Central Hudson's territory at the time. Today, there's 7,000 solar systems in Central Hudson's territory, which is a wonderful thing. 126 of those are in the greater Rhinebeck area, but if you look at the map of where they are, very few of them are in the village. And the reason why there are so few solar systems in the village is evident, you can just look out either of these windows, and all you can see is trees and leaves on trees. So trees and solar systems don't go together very well, so there's been very few people in the village who could host a solar system and save money and help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So what New York State has done to help fix that is introduce a new concept called community solar. And I've passed out some brochures from the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. I'll leave some of those by the door as well. They're from the state of New York. They explain a little bit about what it is. We're holding some free information sessions at Morton Library and Star Library coming up for people to learn a little bit more about it. And the town of Rhinebeck in particular has taken a recent good step towards supporting community solar by amending their zoning law to permit small community solar systems in secluded areas to be built and implemented. The way community solar works is that people who can't cite the system on their house or on their business can participate in a community solar system and have their electric bills reduced through bill credits that are applied automatically by Central Hudson. One of the first questions I get is if you build one of these solar farms, do you have to run wires from the solar farm to my house? The answer is no. They just, Central Hudson and the state of New York have taken care of all that. It can be handled through bill credit. So I think it's a very exciting thing for the village. It'll allow people in the village to get control of their energy costs, allow them to help reduce use of fossil fuels, safe pollution, and help move the world to a better energy future. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Next on our list is the topic about the peddler's permit. And so what I first I can do is open the public comment session. I'd like to, yes, I would like to make a motion to open the public comment section for the peddler's permit.
Second.
All in favor? Abstained? Carry. Thank you. If anybody has a comment about the peddler's permit, please come forward, introduce yourself, and listen to your comment.
What is this?
Alright, so, alright, that's a good question. Let me, I'll read a summary of it. Right? We introduced this before, so apologize because we had talked about it earlier. Any person, whether resident or not, that is selling goods for sale either by foot, vehicle, or other type of conveyance must first obtain a license from the village clerk office. And so what we're trying to do is strengthen our regulations on people who are applying for that peddler's permit. In the past, people could apply, and for a small fee, they could get a peddler's permit, and they could have one or several people or trucks. And we had no way within the village to identify them if they were actually approved and had a permit. So going forward, what we're trying to do to strengthen that law is to have a process in place that allowed that the people applying for that permit would have to follow, you know, in terms of getting, you know, going through a process that would allow us to document and do a research, a background research on them before issuing the public permit. So there's a lot of, I can go through it. The applicant is attacked, the applicant to this application was due to following information to the village clerk. Copy of registration card, if not a citizen, copy of New York State sales tax number, a driver's license, list of items being sold, and seven photographs, two by two, showing the head and shoulders of the applicant, and the vehicle registration, if applying for more than one vehicle. So on the, on the application is the name and address, the telephone number, name and ad, you know, a brief description of the nature of the business. If employed by the owner or licensed vehicle, the name and address of the employer. If other than employment states the nature of the business relationship to name and address, and number of other contracting party which they're working with. If the vehicle licensed or if the vehicle is to be used in a pedaling or solicitation, a photo and description of the vehicle, together with the license number, owner's name, and other means of identification. If the applicant is a company, the name, address, telephone number, and title of the officer of the company upon whom the process or other legal notice may be served. If you claim exemption from the payment of fees, you need to explain that. Name, address, telephone number, social security number, copy of the driver's license, et cetera, et cetera. So, and the terms of which the license will be requested from, start, end, and then period. Upon that, the village will then go, go through the process of doing the background research and then approving by vote for all the peddler permits. That's a summary of pretty much the peddler's permit, and it's, it's a big change for us because before it was very open, somebody could come in and apply.
Is there also a provision that they have to hang a placard, that we will, we will give them a, some sort of hang tag or identification, so residents will know that this person has been approved, doesn't it, that was discussed?
Yes, that was one of the discussion points, that they would get a, similar to what you would see today in a handicap vehicle, something to hang in the rearview mirror that would identify them as a peddler.
That would be, so residents could know.
We've also, I'm sorry, one more comment. We've increased the fee for each vehicle to $125, and $30 per month are for $300, $500 for the year.
Yeah, 50 a month, 500 a year.
Uh, 50 a month, I'm sorry, it was 50.
What would be the criteria? What would be the criteria from yay or nay?
Just a quickie. I always have something to say. Hi, I'm Jerry Dorr, and I'm, I live in the town, in the village of Rhinebeck. Just curious, what would be the yay and nay? I see implications on this license that could, that could be a little bit shaky. It sounds like a good idea, but it always depends on the people that are, that are saying, yeah, this guy's good, and this one's good, and this one isn't. So I just want to know what criteria would be set up for you, to you to award someone the license to do that.
I think largely the criteria is established in the law already, and that what we're doing really, the only law change we're having is the fee structure. So the application itself is what's changed. And I don't, well, I'll, I'll ask her a question about that, but we're, we're basically just trying to comply with the law and itemize the application questions. That's the major change.
I didn't know anything about that.
Yeah. That's my understanding.
Alright, thanks.
Any other comments from the public? I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carry. Now we can go into get formal public hearing portion for, for it. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is that correct, Andrew?
Uh, yes.
I'd like to motion to open the public hearing and open for discussion.
Second.
Yes.
I'll beat you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Any abstained? I think it's discussion. Any discussion amongst the board?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about center clause. There's been some people selling hot pretzels, and so with these, they'd have to come before the board, the village board, and we'd have to approve them.
That's correct.
So then, what if, where that center clause can see somebody who's not approved?
Center clause doesn't authorize a sale of any food, so they are not in the process of granting anybody a permit to self, to self, to pedal within the village. So if anybody is, at that time, we would have to use what we did before, use our lease force to ask them to stop.
Okay.
But that's not a provision of center clause.
No, I understand this. I know this is important. We try to help the local businesses and the local nonprofits who sell hot chocolate and everything, so we'd like to protect them from people just showing up and selling things on their own.
So I had, I called Pat, and I had a handful of changes. She thought they were okay.
You want to review, want to go over those changes?
Yeah. But I also had another question for our attorney. Do we want the, the application to be a resolution and the change in law to be, to be a change in the law? I mean, do we really want to incorporate the application into the law?
We don't need to incorporate the application into the law. It's something that you develop locally to comply with the law.
So that would be, so we could do that by resolution, we could make the change to the code different, right? That's how I would present it.
I mean, I note that if you put the price, or if you put fees directly into the code, you know, that might be more cumbersome. You might want, you know, some more streamlined language to replace the fee section.
So the way we have it is the fees are in the code.
Right. You know, one position was you can change, say the fees for pedaling permits shall be established from time to time by resolution of the Board of Trustees as scheduled, the current fees aren't filed in the office of the village clerk. That'll be one.
So that would be the change to what?
That'd be the criteria.
Which is really the only change to the vote.
That would replace?
It would replace 83-5. That would be the only change.
Yeah, 83-5 fees.
Which is the only change being considered tonight, the only, the only section.
Or we could remove the fees, right? Or just, you're saying remove the fee section and put that statement?
Yes, you need to put something in the section. So that would be the easiest and most efficient way to proceed.
So by resolution, we could do fees, the new fees, and this. So here, here are my comments to the, to the application. So I thought with the, under other requirements, that we strike the first bullet point, copy of alien registration card, if not a citizen, and just add something in the third bullet point, driver's license or other valid identification, so it kind of is just the same thing. And then in number four, she had a typo. It says, if employed by the owner or licensed vehicle, I think we should replace "or" with "of," the owner of the, of licensed vehicle. Item nine, Pat thought we should strike social security number, because I'm not, I think there's rules about what we can do with people's social security numbers that we don't really want to deal with.
Right, I would be, I mean, the most, but I'd say the last four digits, but only if you need them.
Right, so I would just strike, I think it's easier to just strike social security number. Pat brought that up, so. And then after driver's license, again, insert the words "or other valid identification." And then under steps, number two, please attach a copy of driver's license or other valid identification, in case it's a footpeddler, it doesn't even have a car, it would be irrelevant. And then my last proposed changes would be in four and six, the word sponsor, I think should be replaced with the words, with the word applicant, because it isn't always going to have a sponsor, but you're always going to have an applicant. You know what I mean? So that would be, and Cat was good with those.
Any other comments on the permit application?
Then we would put the fees in the permit application, right? Or I mean, it would be part of our resolution.
Be part of the resolution to approve the.
As scheduled, just be maintained in the office independent of the application, and all to be one in the same application.
Yes, sir.
My name is Patrick Lynn. I live in the, in the village here. I just wanted to see if there was any consideration into applying additional fees for like nuisance charges or other things, you know, varying time limits or whenever people are allowed to pedal, and what kind of noise they might be making while they pedal and things like that. I work from home, and I periodically work outside, so if I hear a peddler for three hours a day, it can become a nuisance to me. Is there any kind of fee structure or thought around like maybe applying like a noise kind of fee or anything like that in the application?
Do you want to talk about our noise?
We are considering noise standards in our zoning code, which we're about to adopt someday, because.
Which would be for the business district and residential areas, so that part of that process for these revision of the zoning code includes that noise portion. So I think it would be addressed there as part of it. Because one of the things, you know, you can have a loud truck arrive today, right? You know, on, on the road as well.
Right. And just, just so you know, in the, in the code existing, it says that a peddler should not be stationary for more than 10 minutes in any one particular location, and also basically cannot begin before 9:00 and has to end at sunset or 7:00 PM, whichever it was earlier. So there are some restrictions already in place.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Any other discussion on the permit process, peddler permit? Sandra, can I make a, a motion then to adopt the permit, but then ask for a resolution for the next month, correct?
Well, first, a motion to, and then a motion to adopt the permit, you mean with branch changes?
Right. And then do we need?
A resolution?
Do we need a resolution then?
I think you would need a resolution.
Because we need to write up the resolutions. We don't have a resolution this evening. So that will we do next month?
I would just, yeah.
That would just make sure the process here?
Yes.
Alright, so first thing I'd like to do is make a motion to adopt the peddler and solicitation permit application with the recommended changes.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Close it.
Got a motion to close it.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We take turns at doing this. And we draw straws in the beginning?
Yeah.
I just said sometimes people get more straws than the others. Alright. So second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, alright. So now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed peddler and solicitation permit application with the recommended changes.
Second.
You mean by resolution? That's what I just wrote?
Well, then we will adopt the resolution, yes, for, that would be step three, is my understanding.
Okay, so with her insertion of her change to 83-5.
No, that'll have to be its own resolution. That's a change to the codes. That'll be its own resolution independent of this.
Yes. So the changes would include, that's the resolution to change the code, which would be the next step.
Well, but instead of moving to adopt the application today, could just prepare a resolution for next week.
For next month, but we can change the law today, which the only law change would be 83-5, right? Which is the fees.
Yes, removing the language with the new, and replacing it with new language.
I'm so glad we have lawyers. They're very helpful. Alright, so amend the, amended to say to adopt, to adopt it pending the changes and the adoption of the change to code, right, to amend our law?
Well, so the resolution would be to amend Section 83-5 to state, the fees for peddling permits shall be established from time to time by resolution of the Board of Trustees as scheduled, the current fees is on file in the office of the village clerk. That would be the resolution.
That would be the resolution, correct?
To make, to draw the old, the one we just started on, we should stop that one, right? That's new resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
There wasn't a prior resolution.
There wasn't a prior resolution. So this is the resolution that we need to vote to approve next time.
So I, I'm moved that we. So I, I move that we accept the resolution as read, if I heard.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carry.
So we'll mark it up for next time for the resolution for the application tag.
All right. The next item on our agenda was for a public hearing based on the abandonment of ninety feet of road on eighty-six Livingston Street. I'd like to make a motion to open the comment section for this public hearing on the road, on the road abandonment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Carry. Thank you. This is the public comment section. I would also like to make a comment, start off with a comment, that we will not be able to vote on this this evening, right? There is some other information that is coming forward that we need to continue to, to review. But we are going to open, we have opened the public comment section, and we want to hear, hear from you based on that. Public comment session is open. Does anybody need a review of this?
Yes, could you review the proposal?
So I think it's appropriate then that we could ask the representatives of this to give a short review for the record, please?
Should I?
Yeah.
Do what you need to do. I wish we could project them so you could see them. It's a little bigger. I think we gave you copy of this to the board in the last meeting, right? This is my wife Pamela Moran. I'm Naveen Sharma. We're residents of eighty-six Livingston Street in Rhinebeck. Let me just get my notes if I can. So you're welcome to come and take a closer look at these, more specifically. Oh, I'm sorry.
Will you use the microphone, please?
Yep. You're welcome to come and take a closer look at these if you'd like. But essentially, we're showing the proposed realignment that we're looking for and the abandonment, abandonment of the road. At the property described, we have three lots, all of which do not currently meet Rhinebeck zoning requirements. Some of them are very small, one, two, and three. And there is this road called Livingston Street going through it, half of which is paved and half of which is unpaved. So we don't meet zoning requirements. We have a primitive septic system very close to one of our neighbor's properties, which we'd also like to relocate. It's down over here in the back. In the winter, snow is plowed and deposited at the end of the road over here. And what it does is it blocks access to our, the one driveway we have access to, the barn, and we have no place to park. There's very little traffic that I've observed, vehicular or pedestrian on this road. The very few people I've seen drive into this dead end seem to be surprised, and they have to back out at least two hundred feet. Not an easy or comfortable task unless you want to use one of the driveways to turn around, because there is no place to turn around otherwise. So you've got to back all the way out to beat speed if you come in, because there's no sign. So for this reason, we presented a plan to relocate the snow storage area, which was the primary concern for the village, to an area that's twenty by twenty. And we've been assured by the highway department that it will suffice for their needs. It's actually bigger than anything they would need under adverse weather conditions. We'd like the village to approve an abandonment of the road section, so we could create a viable lot and have an improved septic system, as well as an improved property, because right now it's all divided up into pieces. We received approval from the Reform Church of, the, that's Reform Church of Rhinebeck to actually lease this land if the village were to abandon it. We have a letter to that effect. And this section would also actually eventually provide additional tax revenues to the village, because apparently it's not on the tax rolls. Lastly, I'd like to say we have a track record of historic renovation. You know, we have two churches in Tivoli that we renovated. They were part of Hudson River Heritage Tour last year, very well received from the Rhinebeck Historical Society as well. So we plan to do a very good job renovating and creating this as a property that would be very welcome in Rhinebeck. Those are our comments. Adrian Smith?
Hi there. My name is Lisa Cobb. I'm with Wallace and Wallace and Poughkeepsie. And I just wanted to add a little bit of historical background for the property for those who may not know. If you look on parcel access, which is readily available, you'll see it says FM thirteen forty. That's a reference to a filed map that was filed in nineteen twenty-five by the church. And if you look at that map, it shows this long parcel, this entire parcel as one lot. It ensures the parcel next to it, this one, as one lot, and so on. There's a series of lots in order. This parcel that on parcel access is labeled as Livingston Street, on the actual original map, if you go back to it, is labeled Lot seventy-one and a half. The implication being that it was meant to go with this long lot being Lot seventy-one perhaps, but that's sort of lost to antiquity. But it is not officially a road under any of the current designations. It has its, a road by user because there, it's partially paved, it's partially maintained, and the extent of the road by user is yet to be determined. But we invite, if anyone hasn't been there, particularly on the board, if you'd like to go and see the narrowness of this property. I personally, when I went, was very surprised at how small and close. It looks much bigger from the picture that there's a lot of expanse back there. There's really not. And right now, there is, as Naveen said, there is no turnaround for anyone. It's a dead end road, but there's no indication that you can't pass through or turn around or do anything like that on the property.
If the board has any questions?
Thank you. We'll leave this on for the rest of the.
All right.
Jay, you have anything to say?
It may not make any sense. I have, I have a couple of questions. All right. My name is Jay Dorn. I'm a resident of Rhinebeck. Oh, should I, I'll sign in.
All right. Looking for a raise a hand. Put your monkey aside.
Sorry, I missed that when I came in. That's not true. I just didn't know. You folks said that, that you, I live, I live close by. I'm on Star Drive. And I've driven by that property. You said you were residents. I, I'm assuming that there's nobody living there now, that the house is not occupied? It looks, it looks deserted to me.
We occupy. Yeah, we're there some days a week, right?
Are you? All right. Well, well, I'm going, I'm going to, to say that I haven't seen that, just, you know, for public records. So I haven't seen that. The next thing, I need to know what the intention, I don't mind improvements and changes. I think it's good. But I also need to know what, what the gift is to the community and what changes you're proposing to do with that property. I'm, I'm worried. On the other side of the hill, there's, there seems to be a tremendous destruction. At the end of Star Drive, someone's building a house and it, it really tore everything up. It's not looking good. So I kind of got concerned as a resident. And now I'm looking at that property. I can understand what you're talking about, but I'm not really comfortable in my gut knowing what it is you really plan to do. So I think that has to be laid out for me, if it depends on me, of course it doesn't, for me to be comfortable about what you're doing.
If you may, I'd like to ask the universal public comments to come out, and then maybe we can address all of them again around the going back and forth.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next on the list, Donna.
Thank you. I have comments, written comments, and they'll leave for you, and I brought five. I was going to use this chart, if I may, I'd like to review this.
Donna, will you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Donna Warner. I live at twenty-three Beach Street on the southeast corner of Beach and the Livingston Street extension. I'm one of only two resident owners on the road and in a butter, most immediately impacted by the application for road discontinuance. I did foil and review documents available and had five concerns to share with you today. I have not, I was not consulted in the preparation of the big village proposal. I assume this is a village proposal. No?
No, Donna, that's not true. It came from, it came from the owners.
Oh, okay. Well, in any case, I, because I, this is my first opportunity to comment, I asked if the board would please allow me adequate time, maybe about six minutes. I appreciate it.
There's not a time limit.
You may want to change your mind when it comes up in here.
You have to be precise.
I will be precise. I just gave you the written comments. And since there are technical and legal issues that are way above my pay grade, I asked Attorney Ruplansky to help, and he'll address those legal issues separately. So my concerns, if I might just put the board up now. You can leave this one. I'm going to take this down now. I did, this is the aerial view that the owners just presented. And this is a schematic I drew, because you, what I'd like to point out here is just the narrowness of the road, and I'll come back to this in just a minute. My first comments concern the village case for abandonment. I understood that abandonment is a case to be made by the village, though this is a proposal, is a request of a private owner to consolidate parcels for the purpose of, as far as I know, unknown development. Abandonment, in my, my understanding, is an irrevocable decision. And it's, I think, it's without precedent in the village. And therefore, I think it deserves time and deep consideration before any decision is made. A hasty decision could result in unintended negative impacts for which there is no remedy, or may be no remedy. And important discoveries have already been made about ownership of the road and the village use area that warrant further study. And Attorney Ruplansky will address this. My second point is that all users and uses and impacts need to be taken into account. To my knowledge, this has not been done. Thus far, as far as I know, again, information has been provided by the village highway department and owners who do not reside on the property and whose perspectives are, on use are necessarily limited. Perspectives of residents and neighbors have yet to be considered. Many service providers use this road. The village itself, the post office truck, the UPS, FedEx, Welsh Management Contractors, landscapers, propane tanks, oil trunks, public utilities, visitors, as well as emergency and fire vehicles. I probably should mention the driving schools. And I will mention that the police made it clear that they have a right to do the turnarounds on the road. Other users include the general public, who walk or bike on the road, because it's actually very lovely. And, and also, this includes residents of Star Drive who sometimes walk over the hill. This is a pretty quiet area, and it has a kind of country landscape, and it's viewable and used by neighbors and passersby as just a quiet place. This could be altered greatly. The third point is, I'm going to, calling it the road stops here, issues at the point of abandonment and the impact on my property at twenty-three Beach Street. So if I can refer to this, this is the one lane going in. This is my house, the Clark's residence. This is my garage and a two-car driveway. This is also a two-car wide driveway. And this is the property line right here. A couple of things to observe is that, and I want you to think about this for a moment as a gate going right across here, okay? This area of the road is only fourteen feet wide. That's about a car length. And there is our uneven back lot lines. Here is the property line that I share with the eighty-six Livingston house on this side. There's a little less than seven feet from the house to this property line. And there is just about one car length from the end of my driveway to this property line. This is where the road closure would occur, okay? The area that I circled has limited maneuverability. And over the past four years has been frequently blocked, right here, by owners, visitors, contractors, real estate agents, and service delivery providers for eighty-six Livingston Street, and by the village itself in the normal course of its work. Last year, when they picked up leaves here, they actually put the red dump truck in my driveway, back and forth on my gravel driveway, to move the front loaders this way. So it's a very tight area. Effectively closing the, the property line, closing the road on my property back, back lot line could cause a log jam or hinder a block use of my driveway or present a public safety issue. I submitted some photos, which I am not going to put up here, that show you, these are pictures, these are not pictures from the current owners. These are pictures I've taken over time, because it's always been a problem that I thought I would bring to you all, of how vehicles stop in front of my driveway. I'll tell you why. They just don't bother to pull in. And so, so we have a lot of vehicular traffic and kind of blockage going on here, when there has been no one living in the house for four years. So the, the question is, so you have those photos, just to give you a visual, and I'm concerned about use and impact that might intensify, or that will intensify if the property is used and is consolidated and developed. It remains unknown, or I, by what means, the residents of eighty-six Livingston, their guests, employees, contractors, and so forth, service vehicles will actually access the property and park or idle and turn around. So the next thing, the fourth, or the next point is that there is a proposed paved twenty by twenty-foot pad to move snow removal from here to here. The siding of a paved pad will make existing conditions worse. It is across from my two-car driveway and where I exit onto the road. I'm not sure the Ark of the Village Plow will clear this area and may likely add snow to the area needed to exit my driveway. I just want to point out again here, this red arrow, I can't get out of my driveway like most people do to back straight out and then turn, because it's only fourteen feet. I have to cut a hard turn this way, and it takes the entire little piece of property here to back my car and face forward to get out. When I have two cars in my driveway, it's particularly challenging. I have very little place to go there. It, it's a little jockeying. I actually angle park in my own driveway in order to get out. The page, the siding of the, the paved pad is across from my two-car driveway and where I exit. This, I think this paved pad will place an unacceptable snow burden, snow removal burden on twenty-three Beach Street. It may also impact the other residents. I don't know. Under already challenging conditions, and it really is transferring the problem of snow removal to one, from one resident to another with no added value to the public, service providers, or public safety. To verify, certainly additional onsite study is needed in the presence of owners on the street with, and certainly using two cars entering and exiting the driveway under simulated snow conditions. This has not been done. Also, the use of the paved pad when there is no snow has not been disclosed. It's unclear how this pad might be used and by whom when not used for snow removal. This use needs to be made explicit or prohibit parking and storage and so forth. The last thing about this pad is the environmental and visual impact of the paved pads is a serious concern. A paved pad located as indicated will cover the roots of an old maple tree and a spruce tree and may kill both. Meg Crawford came down and took a look. I thought she would be here today. The, introducing an impervious surface into this otherwise green space may have other environmental impacts, and a secret study is needed. None of our, I'd. None of our, our driveways are not paved, and there's probably partly for looks but also drainage. There are no drainage systems on this road. The road is higher than the abutting property, and that is a concern as to how this would be paved and what drainage issues might be addressed or created. A previous owner regraded the hill around 86 Livingston Street House without a permit and caused drainage issues already documented by an engineer. These issues certainly should be evaluated by the trustees as part of the SEAKER review. In terms of the current use and future use of the 86 Livingston properties, it seems to me the proposal to abandon the road for private use is premature. It is unknown what future use will be. Assessment of impact or use now is distorted, given that the property has been largely unoccupied for four years and is currently used, as I understand, for storage of merchandise. There was one person who lived on the property for a couple of months during the winter, maybe three or four, a single woman, and that was the, the only occupancy that I'm aware of since Pape and Cooperman died, except for the sons who lived there for a few weeks. So, the 86 Livingston Street property has been used for more than half a century as a single-family residence. Improvements, including septic solutions, were investigated by potential purchasers without considering privatization of the road. Also, there's been an ad hoc three-point turnaround capability at the dead end forever, for as long as I know. This is, in practice, this is what has been done. The current owners blocked off both sides of the road in their own driveway, so now forcing all vehicles, including their own, to enter and back out the entire length of the road. So, I respectfully request that the village trustees either deny the application for discontinuance of the road, or further study and investigate all of the issues pertaining to this action before making any final determination. And I do want to thank Pat Coon and John Fenton and the mayor for helping me access the documents, so I have some basis for comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Warner Raplansky.
My name is Warner Raplansky. I'm an attorney. I have an office in Rhinebeck. I'm also the attorney for the town, but I'm not here in that capacity. I've been retained to represent Donna Warner, who just so eloquently testified, who resides at 23 Beach Street, whose property will be profoundly impacted if this road discontinuance. And it's not an abandonment. It's, for villagers, it's called a discontinuance, is allowed to go through. I'd like to clarify the status of the road. There was some question as to whether this is even a town road raised by the applicant's attorney. Livingston Street is a, what we call a user road. It's established pursuant to Section 189 of the New York State Highway Law, and it's established by use. The municipality establishes user roads by using the road for a public purpose, building a road, constructing it, widening it, maintaining it for the statutory period of 10 years. Once the municipality has done that, it becomes a town road. Once it is a town road, the duty has a, the municipality, including the village, has a duty and a right to maintain and improve the road necessary to preserve the public's right of passage, and I cited some case law to that effect. Included in these powers are such uses as appertain directly or indirectly to the right of passage and tend in some way to preserve or make more easy the exercise of such right. So, the, once it becomes a user road, the municipality has enormous responsibility to maintain the road and also has fairly significant rights to maintain, widen, and repair or replace that road. The underlying fee simple ownership in a user road belongs to the property owner. In this case, it's the Dutch Reformed Church. The fact that this was shown as a lot on a map is absolutely of no consequence. The user road status was established probably in the early 1920s, certainly in the early 20th century. And although the church owns the underlying portion of Livingston Street to a width of 60 feet, it's clear that the, that this road has been paved, it's been plowed, it's been maintained, it's been extended for use of motor vehicles and pedestrians for well beyond the statutory period. And once a user road is established, and you will find, if you check with your legal counsel, probably 95% of the roads in the village and the town are user road. Dedicated roads are rare. This is the way most roads are established. The, the village records indicate that the owners of 85 and 86 Livingston Street, parcel number 703299, which doesn't have a street address, Tivoli Commons LLC, has made an application to the village for what they call an abandonment of approximately 90 feet of the, of the Livingston Street, running from the western boundary of their property to beyond the paved portion of the road to an area that's been used by the village forever for snow plowing. The road, the snow is plowed, and it's stored at the end of that road. Documents that have been submitted by the quote-unquote applicant indicate that some preliminary agreements have been made with the Dutch Reformed Church to actually lease that property to them, and if that occurs, as they stated, they will then own that, that underlying, they won't own the underlying fee simple property, but will be just as good as owning that lot. And will enable them to combine the three lots that they already have with this and establish a, a development, which I'll, which I'll discuss later. Apparently, John Fenton and the foreman of the village have consented to this discontinuance, and it's proposed, I assume, at the expense of the village, that a pad would then be constructed in the western portion of Livingston Street, bordering the Tivoli Commons property. And obviously, this was presented to the Board at your June meeting, and now you're here for a public hearing. You can't discontinue a village street until you have a public hearing, and any person aggrieved by any decision to discontinue has the right to bring an Article 78 action in court. Villages have control over their streets, and I'm quoting from this legal document, pursuant to Village Law Section 6602, and the villages and other municipalities hold tight to the streets in trust for use by all of the public. Once a public highway is established by, its continued existence is presumed, and municipalities may close the public highway only when they act under appropriate statutory power. Villages have the authority, it's true pursuant to 612 of the Village Law, to lay out wide, narrow, and discontinue village streets after the conduct of a public hearing, but as precondition to the discontinuance, there must be a finding that the road is useless to the public. And this is established by decision law in the state of New York, and I cited the cases which have established that, and also by opinions of the Attorney General and the State Controller's Office, which I've also cited. And the useless test is quite a formidable bar to discontinuance of a municipal village road. And I'm quoting from the appellate division, Second Department, we are in the Second Department, so this is controlling law here in the, in the village of Rhinebeck. The useless test has been strictly construed, passed, given the applicable publicum juris trust, so that generally, if the street affords a means of ingress or ingress, agress, and is used as such to any degree more than a mere token use, the street is not deemed to be useless. It's a pretty heavy bar for a municipality to establish that the, a road is useless for purposes of discontinuing it. It's also clear that a municipal road may not be discontinued for purposes of benefiting an individual property owner, and I cited two cases in my, in my legal documents supporting that proposition. In this case, it's unquestionable, and I think you have affirmed tonight, that this road discontinuance proceeding was instituted at the behest of the property owner solely for the benefit of Tivoli Commons LLC. It's not been proposed as a benefit to the village. It's not been proposed by your highway superintendent because the road has become useless. It's been proposed simply to allow Tivoli Commons LLC to add another lot to their property, to combine it with the existing parcels, and to enhance their ability to develop that property, and that is not permitted. It's also probably unconstitutional if you were to allow that. It's a violation of New York State Constitution, Article 8, Section 1, which prohibits municipalities from providing property or aid to private individuals. So, if you were to discontinue the street only because of the applicant's, applicant's request, and for the benefit of the applicant, you'd be violating the Constitution. So strict is this useless doctrine that the New York State Attorney General has implied that a village street may be, may not be closed even temporarily for the purposes of study, engineering, surveys, and traffic surveys. I've cited that in my, in my brief. The Attorney General has also implied, this is the New York State Attorney General, has also implied that the only way to close a village street, except temporarily in the case of an emergency, is to discontinue the same upon the finding that it has become quote-unquote useless. And the Attorney General has similarly implied that a village street may not be closed off as a means of dealing with congestion. It may not be abandoned or discontinued for purpose of utilization of such area, even by the village for another purpose. It is a really formidable bar, what we call the useless doctrine, to a village. Now, the village has a different standard for discontinuance of village streets. There's a different law, Article 17 of the New York State Highway Law, that applies to towns. And in its own way, those standards are quite rigorous, but they're different from these standards. Additionally, before you can take any action on this, this is a, an action that's subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which we call SEAKER. It's a, it's not an exempt action, type 2 action under SEAKER. It's what we call an unlisted action, and I cited an appellate division case, which is clearly held that the discontinuance of a road by a village is subject to SEAKER review and that the village board, if it wants to undertake this, has to take a hard look at the environmental impacts that are, will be caused, may be caused by the closing of this road. SEAKER requirements is a rigorous requirement, the, all of the potential impacts of the project, the short-term, the long-term impacts. In addition, the impacts of what this road abandonment or road discontinuance and merger of these lots will produce in terms of development on these parcels. That's an impact which you're required to address as part of SEAKER. You also have to address the more obvious impacts, I'll just list them here, such as the provision, the impact on the provision of ambulance service, the impact on provision of fire protection service, the impact on police service, the impact on the residents of that portion of Livingston Street, the road closure and, and the impacts on parking and traffic on that street. It's already a bad situation. You're actually going to make a bad situation much worse by closing this road, as described by Ms. Warner. You also have to evaluate the impacts on community character and the impacts on the value of neighboring property owners, what this is going to do to the value of Ms. Warner's property and other adjacent properties. It's, 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 it's really an issue which I don't think should even be addressed by the board. And if you, I think it makes sense for you to take pause, maybe examine some of these cases, speak with your counsel, do further investigation, commence a SEAKER review, and really decide whether you have the legal authority to entertain this application by the prior owner. Just want to address a couple of things that the, the applicant has stated about these lots being substandard. You don't need, the fact that they're substandard just means that they're rampant. They, they exist, they're legal lots. You can, under your, your village code, there are things that you can do with pre-existing lots, even though they don't meet the legal requirements now for bulk regulations in size, so that's a non-issue. The solution to the fact that the snow may have, in past years, probably because nobody's lived on that property for four years, has been pushed to the driveway, is easily solved by pushing it farther back. And that's what I think, I mean, this doesn't require a discontinuance of the road, and I think that's what had been done prior to the properties becoming unhappened. You can easily, they're 60-foot width, you can easily solve any problems by creating a turnaround at the end of the terminus of that, of that paved portion of the, of the road. I'm sure the Dutch Reformed Church would cooperate and grant you that. That would certainly solve any existing problems. That's the more sensible solution to this. And the, the fact that nobody can turn around is due, probably due to the fact that the property owner has, has taken stakes and put them in the ground adjacent to the paved portion of the road. I went out to look at the road, and they have, without legal right, have basically barred the municipality from taking care of that portion of the road, which is the shoulder of the road, which is not the paved portion of the road, have seriously impeded the ability of emergency vehicles to turn around. There should be an immediate order by your zoning enforcement officer to remove those stakes. And the last thing that I would like you to consider, and I didn't address this in my, in my letter, is the precedent-setting value of this. I mean, obviously municipalities are not necessarily bound by precedent. I represent municipalities, I know that. But it does create a problem for you if you start without due cause and without justification in the statute and the law, start closing the terminus of dead-end roads at the request of property owners. You have a lot of these roads in the town. If you were to do this, what would stop other property owners who live at the end of a cul-de-sac or at the end of a, of a dead-end road from coming in and arguing to the board that you granted a road discontinuance to these people, but it should now be granted to us? You, you would create a tremendous headache for you in trying to deal with these types of requests. So, I thank you for hearing the app and hearing my client out tonight, and I congratulate you for making a decision on, on not making a decision tonight. And I urge you to do something about the argument.
There's quite a few names on this list, and I apologize for, because there's confusion whether the list is for a sign-in or, or public comment. So, if I call your name, just feel free to say that, you know, no, no comment required. But if you are, please feel free to come up. David Jones. No, that's right. I know David. Ted Lestrange. Lestrange?
No.
Greg Swan, we know Lauren Belden.
Yes. I can't prove on what Mr. Raplansky and Ms. Warner said, so I don't need to say anything.
Thank you. Lisa Cobb.
That was me.
Yes, you want to wait to the end, Lisa?
Yes.
Robbie Moblass, Mobleyce?
Mobleyce.
Mobleyce?
Yes. My name is Robbie Mobleyce. I live at 25 Beach Street with my husband, John Clark. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, so we have drafted a letter together, and I'm just going to read it. "Mr. Mayor and Village Trustees, we live at the northeast corner of Beach and Livingston Streets with our rear lot line and driveway directly adjacent to the proposed abandonment. We understand the reasonable desire for the new owners of 86 Livingston Street to consolidate..." to consolidate their three light lots, but have the following concerns that should be addressed before any final decision. The proposal's aerial view identifies a 20-foot square paved pad for snow storage, but only half of that easement would front on the public street. The proposal's survey map shows the snow easement separated from the street with no public frontage. Either way, this does not appear to be enough space for a village plow to push at a right angle to the street into this limited easement area. Number two, there is an 18-inch diameter maple tree in front of our property at the edge of the proposed snow easement. The paved snow pad would be right next to the base of this tree, damaging the roots and threatening its long-term health. The pad should be located a reasonable distance from this tree and should have protection measures during the paving process. Number three, multiple times per day vehicles enter this section of Livingston Street, thinking it is a through street." Three times during the writing of this letter. "The new owners have recently blocked turnarounds in front of the barn, so drivers have to back out in an unsafe way into the Beach Street intersection. A 'no outlet' sign should be placed at the Beach Street entrance to prevent this. Also, the proposed paved pad should be large enough to handle the inevitable car turnarounds as well as snow storage. Four, the historic barn in the corner of the rear property was originally part of our lot. Like other houses and properties along Beach Street, it would be in the historic district, except that it was sold as a separate parcel sometime before we moved there. In our opinion, historic barns and carriage houses in the village should be maintained and restored, not torn down. The three existing lots, combined with the street segment, would make the consolidated parcel large enough for two legal house lots, providing an incentive to knock down the barn." We hope not. "We would like to know the new owner's foreseeable plans for the enlarged parcel and barn before the village abandons the street. We hope that the village seriously considers these concerns before signing off on the abandonment. We would be happy to meet with the neighbors or village officials to work on potential solutions. We also request that the public meeting be kept open until all issues have been addressed." Thank you.
I think you have comments.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Don?
A little taller than Robbie. I'm a great Villain resident since 1973 and a town resident since 1950. I live at 78 Livingston Street, four doors west on the south side of Livingston, from the property that we're discussing. I have several comments in addition to supporting the comments of Don and Lauren Raplansky. First, kind of at a high level, and putting myself in the position of the board, as you know, I served on the town, worked for four years in the past, and we've dealt with paper roads and issues similar to this in Ryancliffe at the con plan. The first thing I'd ask you to consider when you're looking at this proposal is this strategic question of why would you give up a road that you might need at some point in the future, particularly if you want to continue at order to Star Drive at some point in the future? How can you mortgage the future for the private needs of a private developer in the present? I would say that would be something, as you look way down the road, I wouldn't recommend that as a way to go. Second, the next two points relate to cost. You've heard from Mr. Raplansky that it certainly seems to be case law that supports the fact that this, in fact, can't be done according to state law. You might get alternate counsel once it's been researched, but you're certainly exposing yourself to a lawsuit, which my tax dollars and everybody who I assume is a Village resident would be paying for in the future, or paying for those future costs of a lawsuit for the benefit of a private individual to develop their property. And I can't see the logic in that. But the similar thinking, the SEAKER costs, any portion that the village has to support, you're certainly going to get a planner involved, you'd have to have an attorney involved. Unless you make those all of developers' costs as part of the development plan, those are costs that I am a taxpayer paying for the benefit of a private individual to develop their property. I wouldn't support that. And just an ancillary point related to the turnaround. If you go over to the other side of Star Drive, they have a nice turnaround there. I would suggest, as Warren already had, that you really consider that at the end of that road, solve the snow problem that way. And I can also say, having lived almost 50 years, I've never heard of a problem with snow in that area, ever. So it may be turning into a problem now because it's the advantage of individuals, but I've never seen it as a problem. Still don't see it as that. And then also looking ahead, if you allow this large parcel to be created, which as I understand it could be three legal lots, under the zoning law, Section 12028, that could potentially be three two-family houses with, if they got a special use permit. And you're creating another development, and in all likelihood would be rental. And as I've been before the board before in past meetings relative to the zoning law, only on our, just on our block, on Livingston Street, 70% of the living units on our block, if you circumnavigate the Livingston Street block, which is directly adjacent to this property, are rental now. And the village itself is almost 40% rental. Not opposed to people renting, but I think we've reached the limit. I think that the village should be thinking in terms of encouraging private residential development and not rental development. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Is there anybody that I missed before we go back to Lisa? I didn't have an opportunity to find. Lisa, I think you won the show.
I just wanted to respond very briefly to a few things that were said, and also to, I understand that we'll be holding the public comment open, so maybe we can have John Fenton here next time. Because just so that you all know, the 20-foot plan was largely his design in terms of the plow and turning around. So I'd like to hear from him as to whether it's adequate in scope or not. The hill in the back to go to Star Drive, I invite you all to go look. I think it's impractical to think that it might be at one day connected to Star Drive, given the slope and all that, but that's something you should look at.
The slope could be plowed and it could become a road.
It could.
Does a house being built there now?
The...
The house isn't in the way of construction.
Sir, can I just, I'd like to let everybody move on to the next.
Can we avoid the back and forth, that Lisa could just finish her portion?
As to the fact of it being paved, that was something from John. I am sure that an impervious, a non-impervious surface of some pine would be fine. That would not impact the trees, that would not impact that. It's, you know, that's something that could be worked out among the plans. As far as I know, there is no plans for anything other than a single-family residence. There is no plans to subdivide this, et cetera. Just so you know, I don't know that water and sewer would support the type of development that's being feared. The pad is, if it were to be developed in any form, would not be at village expense. That was one of the things that was discussed. But it was at the request of the village, who did not want to have to maintain, plow, and handle the end of this road, that this, part of this initiative was coming. We agree with that there should be a no U-turn or no outlet or some type of sign on the end of the property. I think that would go a long way to alleviating the unnecessary turnarounds for the people that are not familiar with the area. And pushing the snow farther back right now, that's not an option unless we were to excavate the hill, because you can see, if you go back there, there's a pot where the residue from the snow landed, and it's basically at the foot of the hill. There is no room to put it back further. So I thank you both.
Excuse me, would you please identify the last speaker? Who is it?
My name is Lisa Cobb, I'm the attorney for the property. Thank you, Laurie.
Do I make a prompt? Yes, you have to make a prompt.
Just, I've been through development both in the town and in the village, and I think many people there, but not everybody is aware, there's no restriction at this point in this meeting on what the current owners of the property develop. It's only limited by the lot size and any special permits they can get. So they, it could be said tonight that they're going to develop a private residence, but there's no guarantee of that. And unless there was something they did in perpetuity, there would be no guarantee of that as you consider what they're going to do with the parcel. And I've seen at least two or three cases right in our immediate vicinity, one right directly behind my lot, where a substandard lot ended up with a two-family house with three variances on it directly behind my house. So under current village zoning law and the practices of the planning and zoning board, I've seen some with special permits and lots of variances, lots of things packed into a small space. So I don't think you can assume anything about what's going to be constructed on there. It can't be multifamily, the way I read the village planning zoning law, but it can certainly be two-family, and I'm not sure what the limits of two-family would be. But there's no guarantee at this point as to what's going to exist, but the potential is for two to three two-families as a minimum.
Just a couple of points. These aspersions that we are storing commercial goods, our property is incorrect and false. It's insinuation. I think we've been, you know, attacked by this, with this for a long time in terms of our intentions. We do historic renovations. We intend to make this one of the best properties in Reinbeck. We don't want a multifamily house there. If the village board, you know, wants to work with us and figuring that out, we're very willing to do it. We want to make this one of the best properties in Reinbeck. As far as making a bad situation worse in parking, the only, you know, congestion I see on that street right now are the services that come to 23 Beet Street. Waste management, the landscapers when they come, they block the road. We don't have anybody coming there. And when we, if we were to consolidate these lots, we would make absolutely certain that every visitor to our house would have adequate parking within the area, as well as the ability to turn around. Right now, we're the only people who have been asked to provide the driveway access for people to turn around in that village. Everybody else, you know, in particular, our neighbor on, you know, right next to us, puts wheelbarrows out there to block people. So are we the people who are creating this problem? In terms of stakes being put along the side of the road, they exist right next to us with our neighbor too. So if this is an issue that needs to be addressed, the village needs to address it for all property owners on that road, not just us. Finally, in terms of SEAKER review, we're quite willing to look at what the costs are and work for the village to contribute to those requirements.
My name's Pamela Marin, and my husband, and we are Tivoli Commons. I feel like there are a lot of misconceptions around this entire thing, including some of the things the attorney said tonight, with all due respect, Warren. But it's a very challenging property. And if you're not there and you haven't been there, you really have no idea what it's like. So it's easy to sit here and say, "Just make a nice round turnaround." How many of you would like to have a nice round turnaround where the lights shine into your living room? I mean, where it is between your barn and your house? I mean, it's, it's just not something that is really conducive to having the peaceful environment that our neighbor talks about. I mean, it's a, we're not trying to do a land grab. What happened was, we came in front of the planning board, including John Clark, and they suggested to us that we proceed in this manner, that we, you know, look into acquiring this so that we can move a septic tank that is probably fueling unbelievable plants that Donna has, because it's so close to her property. And also, there's just a few feet underneath the house. I'm sure it's coming underneath the house. I mean, it's a real mess, and it needs to be moved. And the only place to move it would be over to the vacant lot that we have on the other side. So in between there, we have the road, and it's very complicated. We have, to address the man who talked about Star Drive, we are not doing anything like that. I'm pretty horrified, actually, at the unbelievable denuding of the trees up there. We now have like a small animal farm at the house. Raccoons, possums, I mean, tons of stuff that's living in our barn. I mean, it's, every day, every, I go up there to see what's going on. And I, originally, we wanted to buy that lot to protect everybody in the area. And unfortunately, right, you know, it was right after we purchased this property that, boom, it was gone. So I don't know what's happening there, but I'm uncomfortable. So I think that you should know, even though it's not really part of this process, we are not making multiple-family housing. We are not putting a methadone clinic or some kind of rooming house. We are not putting the Taj Mahal, my husband's from India. We want, we're downsizing, we live in an old church, and we want to have a nice, private house to live in with a barn that can house our studio, my studio, and the means. So we don't want to take the barn down. We like the barn as well. I feel like the way, the shape of it may not work for us. We may have to add on to it or modify it, but, you know, we, what we do is adaptive reuse for historic, in historic buildings. And that's what we want to do here, and in this house. It's a really challenging house, and I don't know how, you know, before we invest money, which will be a lot of money to make this happen, we need to know that, you know, we have the space to do what we need to do. It's just for us. It's not a development, it's not, you know, for anything else. And, you know, it feels bad to come to this place and have our neighbor constantly... One of the reasons it's hard to back out is because she piles all her trash right at the very corner of our property. When we first got there, all these same holes came up. The trash bins are out for the day, blocking, you know, the road. And I just want to remind you that these two people, these two neighbors of ours, which, you know, and we want to have nice neighborly relations, live on Beach Street. So where we live, we have 200 feet in front of our house. And when we get deliveries from FedEx or anybody, they just pull their little cart out and wheel it to our house. And I mean, there's no reason that any of these oil people or anything even need to come in Livingston, except for maybe to our place because it's far. But, you know, all of these, you know, all of this kind of information that's going around started right here at the planning board. They said very clearly, they don't, it's not, they don't take care of that part of Livingston. It's all gravel, it hasn't been tar for a long time, it seems. We met with the highway department and John Fenton. They said, John said, "We don't want it, we don't need it. The only thing we need it for is some snow removal." And once you get a lot of snow, they come in with their backup and they take it away. I'm not, I don't love the idea of having to put a pad, a, you know, asphalt pad. If that's what they need, we'll do it at our expense. But I mean, I'd rather have some kind of gravel or something, because I don't like the way that looks. I don't think it has any kind of historic presence, you know? But it really is what they need. In terms of, you know, addressing Robbie and John, we didn't make any of the recommendations. They're the engineers. They're the ones who decided what size and what the plow needed and so on. So we really have to defer to them when it comes to that, because I don't really know. We don't really know. They know.
So those dimensions are not hardened fast if they are found not to be accurate?
Right. The tree is a beautiful maple tree. And, you know, they're... And I think absolutely we should do what we have to do. I'll get an arborist in to see how we can maintain that and, you know, probably needs a little cleanup and trimming. I mean, we, we're not doing this to cause any trouble or to make, you know, to, to do something that, you know, it'll be beneficial to everyone. Warren says that it's going to devalue the property. Are you kidding me? We're going to put something really beautiful there that will make it more valuable. And it's not even in the historic district, but we wouldn't put something that wasn't historically sensitive to the area. So, I don't know, I feel like we get beaten up a lot about this and, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm not sure what to do, but that's what we want to do, is make it one lot. We want to be able to have a decent septic system. I find septic's a little scary, so, because we're on town water in Tivoli, and the one we have is very scary. And, you know, that's, that's what it's about for us.
It's been a year, we want to move forward.
Yeah, and every, time is money, and it's going on and on and on. You know, when I first moved there, we wanted to do a tag sale. I have a lot of stuff. I've been in manufacturing. I made jewelry for the department stores for years. I, I need to get rid of a lot of things. We're downsizing. And she, I, I think it was a frightening amount of stuff that came, and I think that Donna takes incredible care of her property, which I really respect and like, because I like that in a neighbor, but we spent $800 to get insurance because we wanted to be able to use the road, the Livingston Road. But then, at the end of the day, in deference to Donna, we, I didn't do it because I felt like it would be so traumatic and upsetting to her, and what if people walked on her grass? And I just said, "I'm not gonna," she's already traumatized by the stuff, I'm not going to have it. I'm not going to do it. So we haven't done it, and we're not doing it. So that will, you know, that will go away. But, you know, it's a lot of money to get plans and to figure out what you're going to do on a property when you don't even know. Yeah, if it's viable. But we're not, we're not doing any of the things that we might be allowed to do. We're not making multi, we're not developing this property for anyone but ourselves. And it was initiated by the planning board and by John Fenton and the highway department, and that's why we're here now. So, I just wanted to let, to let you know how it is for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Donna?
I'd like to make, I know, and we need to all move on, but I do want to make a couple of comments. I understand the attorney mentioned that we need to hear from John. I, I did, I do understand John. He explained what they did, but what they didn't do was talk to me or look at the, my own vehicles or the movement of my vehicles in and out of the driveway. So I think more study needs to be in that regard, and also other residents on the road. With respect to my stakes, by the way, because I've had so many problems, there's a door here. So historically, and again, I think Ms. Marin has been very good about trying to pull in all the way. Nevertheless, there are landscapers who come down there. There's a gentleman who brings a truck down. There were people who came, who came down here when Bettiana lived here for a while, and they would stop because the door is here. People stop here. I have two stakes, little black ones there, to try to say, "I live here. This is my property." But this is, my house faces on Beach Street, but my garage, an approved two, two-size, two-car driveway, is here, and I use this as a storage area like anyone else would. My gas tanks are back here. Their oil tank is back here. I believe the Clark's tank is back here. So oil trucks are indeed propane trucks coming in and out. For them to discharge their oil, they pull forward. So there's movement back and forth across these lines. I have a landscaper, definitely the year before, came down here and parked squarely in front of my driveway in order to clear the leaves here. So I'm saying this is not particular to you all, it is particular to the circumstances, and that needs to be cleared up. But I leave my waste here because you all want it, only picked up every other week, and then I pull it out and put it here like anybody else would. I don't know why this should be any different, and that's where I offload my trash cans, and the Clark's put theirs right here on the other side of my garage. So this is very practical. And the other thing is, with respect to the word, I forgot you used "commercial," there is a great deal of material stored on the property, on the vacant lot, over here, behind the barn, and possibly in the house, I wouldn't know. Twelve or so boxcar trips were made to deposit the material, and Ms. Marin is correct. I walked out and said, "Oh, my gosh, it's scary." So this is quite true, and so I have no idea what your plans are. We did talk about yard sales because Ms. Marin was somewhat chagrined that the village limits yard sales to only four. And there is an issue with doing yard sales here, which I raised, which, because I don't see how you can get traffic down with no turnaround, you know, that kind of thing. So there were logistics issues. And I do appreciate that we had worked that out, so thank you for that. I think that was my only other comment, but I do think we all need to understand that we have ways to service our property to a pre-standard.
Unless there's any other new information? Yes, sir.
My name is Renee Schmidt. My parents bought the property adjacent to the Red Barn. Sorry, my name's Renee Schmidt. My parents bought the property next to the Red Barn that is currently being developed, and I don't want to comment too much, except that they would, well, they would like to know how, I'm sure most of the public here wants to know that as well, how, what your intentions are to the property. They, they have a very small piece of access to Livingston, or their church property for that matter, and they're in their 70s, so for them, of course, it would be really nice if they could, when they do walk to the village, could use that as an access point. Now, I understand you have small lots and you, you know, you want to work with your septic, so they wouldn't be, you know, I don't want to talk for any neighbors here. For them, it would just be important that they have access or could access Livingston through that, that area. I just wanted to let you know that it's, it would be important for them.
Yes, Donna, give anything new? Just new because...
In relationship to the last point made, the property to the east of the property just discussed that your parents are developing on, not sure who owns that, but now you're talking about two parcels that might want to have access in some future point, if not now, to a road that goes through the, what now is a fairly substantial building, but could be cut down to be made to have road access. So when you're thinking about your overall plan for the village, if you're abandoning the use of the road, there's two properties that appear to have potential need for access to a road through there in the future.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Question?
You have to come up, sir.
My name is Christopher Tavanna. I live on Lorraine, short distance from this property. And I really have no personal beef here, but I'm just curious whether your plans could be realized with an easement so that you could develop the septic you need in the lot you already own.
Just so you know, I mentioned that last month.
Okay.
Yeah, that we could have a septic easement that goes across Livingston to their parcel where they would need a leach field.
Because if it's seen, then the road could be left in place, and all sorts of problems would not arise.
Yeah.
But, I wasn't here before.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the comment section and open the public hearing.
So procedurally, all these statements have been made in the comment section and not in the public hearing, but I propose that you could adopt the statements from public comment on the record. So close the public comment, open the public hearing, document the prior discussion in the minutes, both in the public comment minutes and in the public hearing minutes, which would avoid having to repeat all of that. So that would all be in the public.
You have to repeat this.
Yes. All these comments were just made in the public comment section. We're in the public comment right now. So from a procedural perspective, you as a board could close the public comment section, open the public hearing, and then document on the record all statements from the public comment into the public hearing. You would document the prior discussion in the minutes, so it would show up both in the public comment section and in the public hearing. So it would be as if it had been set after the public hearing had been opened.
I think that's kind of where it was going in terms of wanting to close the public comment, so I should open the public hearing and then based on the recommendation to adopt all the comments into the public hearing.
Yes, you have to open the public hearing with a motion.
And, well, that was a motion. I did make that motion to open the public hearing. Close the public hearing, one.
Close the comments.
Comment, comment, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment, separate. I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Now I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing and adopt the comments into the public hearing for a matter of record.
First, let's just, I say, open it first.
Well, each one can we do in all one?
Okay, you can do it all at once.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any discussion? Okay, so now we're in the public hearing section, right? So, discussion. Any need for discussion? We can, yes.
Well, clearly, we have some things that we have to send back to our attorney for evaluation. I'm particularly concerned by the, it seems like the case law that a road cannot be discontinued for the benefit of a property, a single property owner. So I'd like to, I'd like our attorney to weigh in on that question, please. Starks was a big one.
I think the matter of procedure then is to, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open, all right, for a matter of continuance as we continue the evaluation and bring it forward for the, hopefully, maybe next agenda. So that was a motion to keep the public hearing open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Discussion? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Again, thank, thank you for lawyers. This is important, so I want to make sure it's right. Thank you. Okay, so that ends that portion of the meeting. Okay. And now, if you can keep the meeting going, I'd like to then move on to the department report with the treasurer reporter.
Okay, good evening. My treasurer's report, the results of Reinbeck is for the period ending June 30th.
Can you get a little bit closer to the light, please?
My treasurer's report is for the period ending June 30th. The tax collector account ended the month with $1,439,464.93. The general fund ended the month with $1,267,289.92. The water fund ended the month with $747,669.28. And the sewer fund ended the June 30th period with $741,729.24. I'd also like to point out that the general fund balance is high at this time because the funds for the fire truck are still in there, and those will be expended upon that arriving. The vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $83,846.71. In the water fund, they total $28,093.32. And in the sewer fund, they total $21,548.68. And we have one escrow payment in the amount of $77. The monthly operating statement for the period ending July 11th is provided with the expenses and revenues, and that is attached. The water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and sewer department liaisons and are presented for the board's authorization. I also have a few budget amendments, which are on the second page, right after the administrator's report. The first budget amendment is to decrease a line item, 63104.01, the community action line item that had $1,900 in there, and increase the 1989.4 line item for Panda by $1,154 as that cost has increased, and we did not know that, we were not aware of that increase at the time when we were working on the budget. A second, a second budget amendment that I'm requesting is for some prior year adjustments as I'm working to close out the year, and it would be to increase the cash in the general fund by $1,344.74, in the water fund by $806.84, and in the sewer fund by $537.15. And respectively, reduce the fund balance in those three accounts, the 917.01 and the 915.12 and 13 of those funds.
So to do this, as you go on, sir, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget reported, presented by the treasurer for the village.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion? Thank you. I would like to, on the discussion now, I would like to make a comment about the Panda. There is an increase in the Panda in terms of what was allocated in the budget. Upon investigation, there really were discussions held previously, prior to the adoption of the budget, where Panda had presented an increase to that line item that did not get carried forward into the budget line item. So there, it was, it was information that was available, we just didn't carry, it wasn't carried forward. So that increase of $1,154, we should have had into the budget, and so we need to have a line item to take that from. So the community action line item is the most applicable place to do that. I think the board, I know myself, we're supportive of Panda, and we want Panda to continue, so I would like, I appreciate your support and your opposition of, and your vote for approving that, that line item, I still approve it, so thank you. So now, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the sewer adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstained? Discussion? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the water adjustments as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion? Carrie, thank you.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I just didn't understand. Did you do a motion in second to accept the budget amendment?
Yes, that was the first one.
You did, it was, okay, I'm sorry, you did that, Gary and the seconded.
Uh.
Right, okay.
I remember I was drawing that line. Police report. This is for June, the month of June. Total number of incidents in the town was 28, total number of incidents in the village 96, total number of tickets, town 43, total number of tickets in the village 119, total arrests were four, and total number of accidents was 14. That's the end for the police report. Fire department. We mentioned previously the loss of John McGuire. It was a very sad day, but for the building report, for the month of June, there were a total of 92 alarms for the fire department, 26 fire calls, 58 EMS calls, eight motor vehicle accidents. The ambulance did not respond to nine calls, therefore, the response percentage was 87%. Good news, our new fire truck has been delivered to Garrison, where it's being outfitted and with, with labels, and we expect delivery within the next week or so. So that'll be as significant a benefit. Fire department. Building and zoning. Lighting and zoning. For building department, CO searches, $450, building permits, $5,508.90, certificate occupancy, zero, fire inspections, 75, escrow, nothing, violation fees, nothing. For the planning board, site application fees, of course, nothing, site plan application fees, 150, special permit application fee, 150, subdivision application fee, nothing, historic demolition fee, nothing, planning board discussion, nothing, and copies, or nothing. Zoning board, area variances, I'm gonna just summarize all these, area variance, area variance application fees, used variance application fees, interpretation fee, copies, escrow, parking in lieu of fee, and expensory emergency fee, for all, zero, for that month. The next item on our list was continuation of the revision for the zoning, and I'll turn it over to Brett.
So the proposed changes that went to public hearing on June 14th were submitted to the Dutchess County Planning Development, and they have not completed their review yet. So the review will be completed by July 25th, 2017. They're gonna avail themselves of the 30-day requirement, because we had complicated and many various and sundry changes. Also, like, we memorialize our changes from the public hearing discussion, and I've given a memo to the group, but I think what we should do is provide a draft, another draft to the public and come to a time when we're just gonna vote on this thing after we close the public hearing last time. So I'm not sure what date that would be, I mean, I'm not gonna be here until August meeting. So might have to have a special meeting early August, I don't know. Howie, are you gonna be gone same week I'm on?
Yeah, I spoke.
I think what we need to do is, well, at the end of the meeting, we'll set a date for the meeting.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that makes it available for, for everyone to attend, so maybe we can make, make an adjustment to that date.
Okay. So that's all I have on the zoning code now.
Highway department. There was an item on the agenda for the living street road abandonment, which is really the same thing as the topics we had before. I apologize if I misprint on, on the agenda, so that item will not be covered. The next would be the sidewalk bid, which we approved last month, and update status of that.
Okay, we have some good news. This is the West Market Street sidewalk project, and I can say that John Fenton met with representatives from the company on Monday, they came down, they took a look. They are looking to get started the last week in July, the first week in August, and that's always based upon the weather and other factors, but that's now the part of the time to start the state and sign off on everything they need to do. So we are ready to go, basically, just get the contractor, get the contractor. And do you wanna do Montgomery and Astor?
Yeah, you wanna just deal the whole highway report?
Sure. Okay, well, in terms of other pieces, pieces of construction, the reconfiguration of the Montgomery and, Montgomery and Astor sidewalk in Curve, that's scheduled to begin the week of August 7th. Again, weather permitting, and creek don't rise. In general, for the highway department, it's been normal brush pickup, street and sign repairs, maintenance, mowing, weed whacking. There's been some tree side re-removal, tree removal, garbage pulled from the rain, the drains, rainstorms. And also, I've noticed there's been some black topping and preparation going on at Livingston Street, Center Street, Chestnut Street, and Solar's Drive. The only thing that we're still hanging on is the town's bid for the Astor Montgomery milling and paving project. We've received two other bids from private contractors. We're waiting on the town. And John has asked, and I've asked, and I've communicated with Supervisor Spintzia that we need an answer front of. So that would be the, well, I'll do the IMA too. So from the IMA point of view, there's a whole series of documents which I've put together, I've run them through our attorney, Rich Nelson. He has signed off on them. We are, however, at this point, waiting for the town to finish their evaluation. And so Rich actually sent me an email this afternoon saying, which is not taking action until we hear from, until we hear from the town. But as far as we're concerned, we have an intermunicipal agreement to enact the grant with the town that is prepared. We have a request, a proposal, which the county will let, and we also have our scope of services and other documents that are required, so our docket is squared up. It's waiting for, for the town.
Thank you, Rick. That's good progress to be made on that. This presents, I think, a little bit of an issue for waiting for the town, only for the standpoint that if they wanna start, when was the date for that Montgomery and Astor? We're supposed to be starting, like, by August 7th?
That was, yeah, that was, that was, they were looking at, when we initially met with the town, it was early August that they were looking.
So we need, we need to have a bid, so we can decide which way we're gonna go?
Right.
Right? Do you have a response from the town as to when?
The Supervisor Spintzia has suggested that people help get an answer quickly.
Very good. I'd like to make, propose that if, if need be, we hold a special meeting to do that. If you get that information, you can set and announce a special meeting to make that happen and make that decision.
Great.
And Yellen Kelly? Water department.
June's report, total water treatment, 13,589,000 gallons. Seventeen, oh, August 17th was a power failure, I mean, I'm sorry, June 17th was a power failure. The 21st, Aqualogix was on site to fix the main control panel, communication to filter control panels caused by a power failure. There was another power failure on the 27th caused by the storm, brought some trees down, caused the driveway to be blocked, and the Brian, Alex, and Tony bought a return and cleared the way. As far as the distribution system is concerned, the, on the 12th, they repaired the valve that feeds the wastewater plant, so they could shut it down for repairs, and they replaced the broken fire hydrant on St. Charles Street and Ryan Cliff. Nine new radiometers were installed. I have, today, Anthony Boont, he started, he's the new trainee, and he's very enthusiastic and ready to go, and that's great. I do have a, the chlorine room is, basically, there's a chlorine gas leak, and so all the, a lot of the equipment in the chlorine room is corroded. And there's this, it's a, a real specialty kind of discipline to repair these things. There's a service company out of Pennsylvania, and they're the only ones that Brian Alex, the waste, the chief water operator knows in this, in this region that does this, and they prepared a bid to fix all the things in the chlorine room. So I do have a bid from that company for $8,429. I was gonna bring it up later, but they were able to push us up the schedule, so they're willing to start sooner. We thought they'd probably start in September. So the, the scale would need to be replaced at $2,200. So what, we have the chlorine and we weigh it, that's, that's how much, that's how they know how much has been used, and the scale, the scales are not working properly. So that, the scales would be replaced for $2,200. Two vacuum regulators, which will be, have an increased capacity, because there's more chlorine being used than used, than there used to be, because we have more water usage. That would be $2,170. There's switches and tubes to the tune of about a grand. And then the chlorine alarm doesn't seem to be working, so when there is a leak, it, we're not sure if it's functioning right now. So the alarm part would be $1,570. Subtotal is $6,900, and labor's $1,461. Comes out to $8,429. And I would propose that we accept this bid from ES2, ES2 Environmental Services and Equipment Service out of Piper'sville, Pennsylvania, to basically renovate the chlorine and make it safe and more effective.
Second.
Oh, just so everyone knows, we have a gas chlorine system, so it isn't like, there's like a little spray of, you know, of fluid coming out. It's very, very difficult to detect where the leak is coming from, but it still has the same qualities. It's corrosive in nature, it's eating up all the metal in that area, you know, it needs to be fixed.
Can people enter the room?
Yeah, I've been in there, it doesn't, like, your eyes don't burn, there's just, there is too much chlorine in there.
Can we just replace some equipment in the chlorine room?
I'm really not sure. There's some things that...
I believe we just, I just wanted to thank you.
There was a couple of little regulators that I think are newer, they're still functioning.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so they're not...
They're not affected.
You wanna make sure that what we just spent?
Right, no, those are, yeah, those are okay.
Okay. And I get a kind of procurement question. This is one, a single bid.
I was gonna ask if you feel that, I can also defer to, if you feel that it's a sole source as it's a very specialized...
It's a specialized, yes, or...
So I would go under that it's a sole source?
Yeah. We would be unable to get three bids. I mean, we could make a good faith effort and fail, you know, I mean, we'd be bringing, this is the, the group that does it for this part of the country, from what I understand.
And is it also a time-sensitive emergency type of...
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, it could wait 30, 60 days, but they, they wanna do it now, so they, they would put us in the queue, and so, yeah, if they want us, if they want to do this job now, they might postpone us 90 days if we don't take them up on, on their offer now, so.
And the only, you talked about the equipment that's to be replaced, but you didn't talk about what is your fee for finding the leak? Or has the leak been found and stopped?
Um, no, they didn't find the leak yet.
Would this company find the leak?
Yeah, by, by virtue of replacing all these things and all the fittings and the tubing and everything.
Okay, so that's really what it is, is the fittings and tubing is...
The fittings and tubings are, like I said, about a grand. The scales are $2,200, two regulators are $2,200, labor's $1,500, the alarm is $1,570.
Do you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid.
I'd like to second that motion. I don't get to do that.
I get to do it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Do you, do you generally accept bids by motion or by resolution?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you accept bids by motion or resolution? Do you generally?
Mostly.
It can be blocked on.
Yeah.
That's how, yeah, that's pretty much how we're talking.
As long as we have a bid in the bid that fits into our procurement policy.
We'll include that in the...
So as far as our application for environmental, environmental facilities corporation to do water line replacement on Route 9 in the Chestnut and Platte in Livingston, we have to come up with a bond resolution to show that we have the money. We've already agreed to pitch in $250,000 toward the project, but we, we need to have bond resolution as part of our submittal requirements to EFC. So we did submit to them, but we didn't, we submitted to them without the bond resolution, because we have so many things going on. I wanted to get the public on board with this and spend some time specifically on this issue and have a special meeting where we explain how much money we may wanna borrow for this project and come to a bond resolution to bring the public on board with this project. And I was hoping we could meet two, two weeks from tonight and have a special meeting. The engineer would be there to do PowerPoint, do the dog and pony show on the project and explain everything to the public, and then maybe Karen and I can go over the numbers. And what do you guys think about that? That would be 25?
That'd be the 25th.
Yeah.
That looks good.
Is there a certain amount of money we're trying to get?
Yeah, we're going, we're in for both, for grant and for low and niche financing, so we've gotta kind of do worst-case scenario with the bond resolution and suggest to everyone that this is the outside limit, we're not really gonna hopefully need all of it, but you have to vote on kind of worst-case scenario.
Do you want the bond resolution to prepare?
Well, we'll have to prepare it, we'll have to.
For that, for that meeting in two weeks?
Yeah, we'll have to have something prepared.
So should we have the board authorize the preparation of the bond, 'cause it's gonna, we're gonna have to...
Well, can we plug in the number at the, at the meeting? Or do, 'cause I don't know.
Well, we're gonna have to pay the bond council to prepare the resolution, so I think you just wanna resolution to authorize the preparation of it.
I thought we had a high-end number, and if we could use that, then we didn't have, we could go use the high-end number, but if we didn't use it, we were still safe. Is that correct?
The high-end number's getting very high, because they discovered there's concrete, you know, on Route 9, and it's basically, it's a saw cut, and they're up, or what, what was it, three and a half million?
Yeah.
And I'm trying to work with Troy and see if we can do better even for the worst-case scenario than that, but I don't really have a number tonight. I thought we could get a bond resolution and plug in the number that night.
Like, what would the bond council work with, then?
They have to do it in language, yeah. So, I mean, Karen and I can work on this offline, you know.
But you still, you still have a motion for a special meeting on the 25th, is that correct, or you're suggesting a special meeting?
Yeah.
Or you'd like to make that a motion, if we can, we can tie in the highway, highway is part of that. Okay.
So I mean, are you, hold on, I'm sorry. Well, you guys, well, you have a motion, right?
Yeah.
We can second that.
You second it, we have a second. Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Now discussion, yes?
Were you getting, Karen, the fact that if we have to spend any money on the bond attorney to prepare this, that maybe we should decide now?
Correct.
That's what I was gonna make Karen say. So maybe we should have another motion that we are going to...
Authorize the use of...
Authorize the use of our, of our bond council and our bond representatives to prepare the...
And munistat as our...
Munistat, to prepare the bond resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So what was to have a meeting on the 25th?
Abstained? Discussion?
Just let me ask you a question while Karen's catching up here. When does this have, this grant application have to be in by?
It's in. We already missed it. It's in, we did have, missed it.
We did that last time.
Okay.
We did, we submitted it without the bond resolution.
Okay.
So they're gonna say, where's your bond resolution? But we're... But we're, you know, we're...
It's not gonna affect us.
Troy's saying it's on its way, so, you know, hopefully not.
That was what we discussed last time, we're trying to buy time.
See, but we might be getting a bond resolution or it might, might be too late.
Well, but we're ahead of a lot of other places because we're shovel, right? We have drawing, we have complete set of drawings over, yes.
But we're not told to use the money because we...
No, but the application had to be in by certain day.
Oh, right, right.
For the, for the...
It's the only item we didn't have.
We had the application in by the date, we just didn't have the bond resolution, you know? Which we said we would do in the following, which was accepted.
It's just, it was a practical matter. Last month, we had a meeting that was ended at eleven-thirty and, to throw in a three-million-dollar project that night, or two and a half or whatever.
So, um, I don't know. I think we voted already in favor, if any other discussion changes to that. So we're gonna have a special meeting on July twenty-fifth at seven o'clock to discuss, um, the highway paving of, of Montgomery and Astor and then also the bond resolution for the water improvement project on Route Nine.
Right.
Done?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, it was, it's just complicated.
Karen, you caught up? Uh, Howie, wastewater.
Okay, wastewater for June. Uh, wastewater treated was four-point-three-four million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was thirty-six thousand eight-hundred gallons. Pounds of sludge processed was four-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-seven pounds. Uh, everything's working good down there at the wastewater plant. Pete wants me to do a public service announcement here for the residents of Village Green. Um, there's some cloth rags are getting caught in the, uh, the pumps and it's kind of stopping the pumps and they got, they have two pumps, but they got to shut one down to see what's going on. So the, he's asking everybody not to flush down any cloth rags in the toilets. Um, we're not pinpointing anybody, but, uh, there might be more than one person doing it, but please don't flush any cloth rags down in the, uh, in your toilets at the Village Green or anywhere. That's it for the wastewater department. It reminds me of the times when I had to say to the highway department, please don't put your grass out because we can't pick up the grass clippings due to the, uh, Environmental Protection Agency, whatever it was.
You know, um, in my recent visit to Not Only Water and the wastewater department, uh, reoccurring theme is having alarm systems. Not alarm systems for perimeter alarm systems, but alarm systems associated with control valves and operation that needs to be updated. Um, I really would like to suggest that we look into that as a combined effort to in- increase our security at both wastewater and the water, water treatment plants. Uh, the current alarm system, if anybody knows, is rather antiquated. Um, it makes a call, but if you don't answer that call, it doesn't call anymore. So if there is an issue, uh, it could, it could be dire. I think several years ago, there was an issue, um, when we didn't respond. It wasn't dangerous, but it was an alarm system. So in this way, we, I would like to propose that we look at doing a centralized alarm system that is tied into a company so that we can, you know, they will continue to call somebody in case, until they get ahold of somebody to, to respond. We have minimum staff and it's important that we be able to respond, so I guess I would like combining from wastewater and water to look at that, doing that jointly since it's one op, one function rather than approaching it as separate, you know? If you guys don't mind.
So we can work on that.
Thank you.
I have some ideas.
Oh, okay, good.
Tree, tree committee. Rick, anything from the tree committee?
Uh, there were no application reviews from the tree committee. The only, um, or the only thing I think of general interest is that at the last, uh, hearing for zoning, um, it was suggested that we should look at our sidewalk code, um, to update it, uh, in order to make, uh, accommodations for, uh, trees and, and moose stripes in between and basically, uh, see what we can do to revise it. Also, the current code allows asphalt sidewalks, which I think most people do not want to see. So, uh, I'm gonna be working with, um, the tree committee to find out basically what the best practices are in the area and I'll be bringing, bringing forth some, some color changes for the sidewalks upcoming.
We do have one tree?
Yeah, we have, well, I didn't come to the, it didn't get to the tree committee.
Oh, didn't get to your meeting.
Yeah, it didn't, yeah, so.
Yeah, I noticed that there was no, like, sign on the phone.
Yeah.
No sign on the phone.
Yeah.
Didn't make approval.
Yeah.
Ethics committee.
Okay. Split the tally, go ahead, you start. Okay, so, uh, basically, uh, Howie and I, um, interviewed, uh, people who were interested in, uh, constituting the village ethics committee, um, of that group. Several people, um, said actually weren't that interested, a couple people did not live in the village, so they were disqualified, um, which basically brought us down to three people that we would like to recommend to constitute the village ethics board. The first one is, um, Carol Urban. Uh, Carol is a, uh, former State Department employee and, uh, actually did a lot of this kind of work, uh, for the State Department in various locations around the world. Um, she's still called back occasionally by the State Department when they need somebody to go out and babysit people, babysit a, an embassy of people on vacation. Um, so I think she's quite qualified. Um, the second person, uh, is Gina Fox. Gina came across and she was, um, very excited, um, and interested in, uh, serving on the ethics committee. Obviously, she's got a fair amount of, um, village and town experience. How was you gonna talk about Walter?
Yeah, I have Walter Cotter, he's, he, um, was the manager at, um, it's not Verizon.
Frontier.
Frontier, couldn't think of the name yet. At Frontier Communications. Uh, he's retired now, but, um, he's also a very active firefighter, so he was concerned that, well, first of all, he has a lot of, he has experience with ethics because that was part of his job as a manager, so we felt he'd be a good fit. We just kind of had to talk him into doing it, but he's concerned about, um, the time that he would spend because he spends a lot of time in the fire department, so he's willing to, to do it, but it becomes very time consuming, he doesn't want it to interfere with his fire department duties, so I'd like to recommend Walter Cotter.
Okay, and looking...
Yeah, we have another issue here.
Well, we have, well, a couple, and looking at this, basically, we are, because the, the, um, board's currently vacant, we're actually filling vacancies and so technically I believe that the terms are only gonna run until, um, basically the, and until the next board and then they're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out re-provals again.
Right.
So Walter, you agree?
Okay.
In other words, you can try it.
He can try it.
Yeah, he must have tried.
So, do you want to do the, the change, Howie, maybe?
Uh, the term?
I got it, I got it.
You got a...
Let them know the terms, but the, um...
The problem with the elections?
The problem.
Okay, well, the one person, um, Carol Urban brought this up to us and I did, I did notice it. Uh, there's a section of the, uh, ethics code, six-eighteen, uh, the letter C, which says, "An ethics board member may make campaign contributions but may not participate in any election campaign except as a candidate." And, um, Rick and I kind of agree we should change that to, um, perhaps say, "May not participate in any village or town election campaign except as a candidate." So that they can participate in, you know, national elections, county elections, so we don't want to hinder anybody.
Right.
Doing that.
It, it just seemed quite overly broad. Um, the provision is that, uh, no board member will be an officer in a political party, um, employed as a lobbyist in the village, um, but then it came in the last clause, "May not participate in any election campaign except as a candidate." That did seem a little overly broad and I think both you and I thought that, um, it probably, the restriction would be both town and village because there is a, an overlap of, of concerns between the town and the village.
So we don't know if we need to, um...
We're gonna have to change...
Have a public hearing on this, change the, uh...
If it's, if you can be the patron, I'm assuming it's in the code, right?
Yes, in the code.
So you do need to have a public hearing, change the code.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll add that on to our special meeting on the week.
Are you suggesting that that's gonna exclude one of your...
Yes.
Yes, I, yes, and also I think that if looking for people in the future, it seems a little overly...
Yeah, it does. You know, Howie remembers I, you know, shepherded this statute through at the beginning and that was pretty strict. Um, but there might be four or five other things that the ethics board might want to change also, but they actually reviewed the code and found a couple other things, but then we can't get somebody on there until...
Right, and let's, 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 let's start here and then...
We need to, we need to chicken before the egg here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to explain that to, uh...
I, I, I've talked about it, yeah. Got a really fine tooth, though. Sharp, yeah.
So, let's motion and then we'll discuss.
Okay.
Do you want to make the...
So, put that motion to appoint the three, the Carol Urban, Gina Fox, and Walter Cotter to the ethics board, so I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So discussion? Um, my first thought was if we could continue this and have the members participate in, and while we do the public hearing, right? So we can appoint, so at least we have a public hearing and with the under, with the understanding that if we don't adopt the public code, then we need to find a replacement? Is that possible?
Well, um, I would hold the public hearing first, change the code and then appoint the person that there's now conflict with, unless there's something in your way.
Well, she's, 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 there was no current conflict.
Okay, potential future...
She's a person who's politically active and she, you know, doesn't want to be...
Well, it, it does restrict a lot of people.
Yeah.
I mean, any candidate...
Right now, she's not in the process.
No, no, she's not currently, she's currently not included from...
Okay, then that was fine.
That's why...
Yeah.
That's what changed.
There might be other changes to, that they might recommend.
Right, but I think, right.
You may still want to get this one change squared away now in the event that she decides, you know, a month from now, participate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to act on it, I agree.
Cause in theory, you could set the, you only ten days notice, you could set the public hearing for, you know...
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, just fifteen days from now.
There we go.
There we go.
So, uh, do you need, um, how do we, how do we publicize the language that you want to, you want to use?
So you would have to post, you know, online ten days before a copy of, um, and wherever you would otherwise post, you have to have that available, ten days before the public hearing, so in four days.
Okay.
So be mindful, we're not giving ourselves a lot of time, but it seems like you already have the change figured out.
Right.
So it'd be easy to post.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as everybody on the board agrees with our proposed change.
Yeah, do you, do you tell them?
Our proposed change is to, uh, any, an ethics board member may, may campaign contributions but may not participate in village or town election campaigns.
Except that's a candidate.
Right. That's fine.
It doesn't have any, you know, they're restricted, right now they're restricted.
You can count on me, Howie.
Participating in any election campaign, okay.
Are you, any village or only Rhinebeck Village and Town?
Well, do we, should we say Rhinebeck Village and Town, any wording?
Well, I don't know if you would have any issue with someone here supporting, you know, some Poughkeepsie...
Okay, we should say Rhine, okay.
If, if, if you, if you would have that issue, then I think we should make the language more specific that way, otherwise you could have the word Rhinebeck Village and Rhinebeck Town.
Rhinebeck Village and Rhinebeck Town. Yeah, we've talked about county, but...
Yeah, it seems, I think, I mean, I think that the potential, because the, how the village teams work together, no overlap, that would be where they don't, where you would want to make sure everybody's clear, but county, okay?
I think there should be...
I just, it's just village and town.
Yeah.
So is Rhinebeck Village and Rhinebeck Town?
Okay.
All right, so I, I'll make an amendment to the motion, um, that we appoint Carol Urban, Gina Fox, and, and Walter Cotter to the ethics committee, um, in lieu of while we discuss the changes to the ethics code, uh, to allow committee members that participate, that cannot participate in a Rhinebeck Village or Rhinebeck Town as a, you know, except as a candidate. With a special meeting to be held, it's a long one, a special meeting to be held on July twenty-fifth.
A public...
A public hearing, sure, a public hearing, to be held, a special meeting on July twenty-fifth. How's that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any other discussion?
Uh, just so you know, I'm on the ethics board for the town, so I'm gonna bring this up too over there.
I think, I don't know if that's ethical. I think, I think that, um, just this conversation Gina pointed about, I think that the, that the way that the town code is, is that, um, it's two people from each party, I think, that they actually don't...
Well, she, she suggested that we have an appeal, but there's three people.
There's only three people. That's why we changed it for this, because we figured we were smaller, we have a smaller board.
Yeah.
They have five over there, we have three, so, and we didn't want to exclude. We didn't think people would be partisan just because they're on the ethics board, so...
Right.
Hopefully. It's unethical.
Right, and, and I said, everybody approached this with a very serious...
All right. Howie, Rick, thank you for bringing this forward. I know this has been a while and I appreciate, uh, your effort in making that happen. Okay, uh, sure, an update on the STR, so it says S-B-R, but it's STR Short-Term Rental Committee.
So we're just getting underway, we have one, uh, one meeting so far and we're going to have a meeting, uh, a week from tomorrow, our second meeting. We made, we started discussing whether, uh, room rental homes, uh, right now considered a permitted use. We wondered if there could be an abbreviated approval process and an administrative review process that's, uh, perhaps, um, almost like a fire inspection, with a fire inspection fee, so I'm working with, um, we're, we're discussing that with the group and, and I'm getting feedback from John Fenton on something along those lines. And then we're gonna move into vacation rental discussions that are unhosted, which seems to be sort of the, the more difficult issue, but we're, we're, we're moving forward on that. Donna Warner was here earlier and she cannot, her schedule does not allow her, you know, to continue on this, so I'd like to, uh, get a replacement and, uh, I was talking to the mayor about, um, perhaps having Josh Pulver be a, uh, replacement on the STR committee. He's a, a new ZBA member and he's eager to get involved with things, so, uh, I would, and I talked to Josh and he's willing to, to go in the committee to replace Donna Warner.
And is he acting in a specific role on the...
Well, yeah, her role is to be sort of a community advocate for, or to not advocate for, you know, un, unhosted vacation rentals. Josh is just a member of the ZBA and I don't even, haven't discussed the position, but he's a love-headed guy and I don't know what his position is.
In my discussion with Josh, he seems to be very neutral.
Neutral.
I think it's the best way to put it. So it's, you know, presents a, and, and also another perspective.
Okay. But is everybody else pro?
Pro which?
Pro unhosted rentals, because we did want to have a little balance, like, we're talking about a balance on the ethics board?
No, they're not pro, they're not all pro, you know, unhosted rentals, I mean, but we're all, it is a deliberate process, so we're not, we're, we're taking feedback from all, from each other and we're all, you know, we, we have open ears as a group, but... So Josh should be a nice balance point for the group.
Done the motion?
It is.
Second motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any other discussion?
What's Josh's last name?
Pulver, P U L V E R.
And I'd like to talk about our Environmental Committee. We actually had our first meeting on July sixth, which is an introduction of the members. And the members besides myself and Elizabeth Binzia, the town Rhinebeck Supervisor, we have Dan Shapley, who represents the River Keepers, and Matt Stinchcomb, who have also village, is a village resident. Dan is a town resident, Matt Stinchcomb is a village resident, who is a very activist in the environmental issue and has been in a long time, and is associated with a lot of the current trends in going forward. We had a lengthy discussion, and the discussion ranged from what is, you know, setting the event, you know, charter for the, for the committee, you know, because it involves with dealing with things like electric vehicle charging stations, which is an up and coming issue with the electric cars coming into the village and other areas, and how we would address that. Also to talk about a community bill of rights for water and energy preservation. We really don't have anything that says what is, what do we stand for in terms of a community for water and energy preservation? And then a sustainability action plan, which would deal with a process of education and obtaining grants to deal with environment issues. Again, the goal of this committee, the charter of this committee is to be cognizant of environmental issues that are happening not only locally but nationally. Bring them to the board's attention so that we can, you know, address, address what issues. They are not decision makers, they are information gatherers to do it, and we're still looking for more members. If anybody else would like to join the Environmental Committee, this is a very good group and a very nice way to become involved in the village and setting our future direction. So please reach out to either myself or Elizabeth Binzia, we are both chairs for the Environmental Committee. Our next meeting is going to be held in two weeks. We will, we're looking to invite an outside speaker. There's a, there's a, along the lines of current events, there's a new project that's being basically started here in the village of Rhinebeck, and it's by Google Ax, everybody knows Google Ax. That's a, that's an organization with inside Google that does development efforts, and they kind of keep it secret till they roll things out. And they started a project a while ago called Dandelion, and Dandelion is a new process for geothermal. And they are going to launch this in the Hudson Valley, specifically going to launch it here in the village of Rhinebeck, because it feels a good place based on, you know, the people that live here and their interest in environment, as well as the geological association with doing it. So we're looking to hear from them and see how that could apply to our environmental. We also had a second meeting, this is not by the Environmental Committee, but two months ago, we had Dan Shapley come in and talk about water river quality. Remember, we adopted a resolution for water resolution, water quality, and agreed to go forward with a score, with a scorecard. Part of that was to join the seven municipalities that are locally, that draw their water from the Hudson River. That is, to obviously the village of Rhinebeck, town of Rhinebeck, the town of Poughkeepsie, the city of Poughkeepsie, Hyde Park, town of Lloyd, and town of Esophus. On July tenth, we held our first meeting with the supervisors and mayors in Poughkeepsie on that subject of working with them to also adopt the policy that the village and the town of Rhinebeck have adopted to work towards as developing a clean wat, the Clean Water Scorecard. We, everybody was present except for the city of Poughkeepsie, they had a special issue and could not make it that evening, but everybody present decided that it was definitely a positive direction and something that everybody would want to be involved with. For instance, to town of Lloyd, we've talked about sea level rise and impact on our water treatment plant. The town of Lloyd ended up at the blast superstorm Sandy with almost $2.5 million worth of damage due to that storm. So they made a lot of extensive repairs, and they're looking for going forward. The town of Poughkeepsie has done a lot of work in preservation of their water treatment plant in terms of protecting things. And one of the key issues going forward is, on July twenty-first, I think you've all seen in the press, there was an announcement that says the anchorage of, the anchorage of barges have stopped. A little bit incorrect because the petition by the Coast Guard to have anchorage was not stopped, it was just suspended. And on July twenty-first, they're going to form a task force to further address this issue of the anchorage of barges on the Hudson River. Of this group of town and village mayors and supervisors, we decided we would like to have a representative, a technical representative, on that task force to represent all of us as a collective group rather than each of us participate, that we could all feed into, seems like a way to go. And the town of Poughkeepsie is working towards using one of their water treatment plants, who happens to live here in the village, I won't name him until, because he probably hasn't been asked yet, as a representative for all of us to address those issues in terms of the anchorage, and looking forward to moving that on. In our correspondence section, I'm just going to bring this forward now, we did also have a letter from the House of Representative, John Fasso, about important to bring our attention to regarding the United States Coast Guard proposed changes in anchorage to the Hudson River. This is at the end of your package, I'm sorry, I'm pulling forward, because it's related to what we're trying to accomplish with the Clean Water Initiative and, and serving on that task force. And he's, to summarize the letter, he encouraged us all to contact, you know, our representatives and reach out to them if any questions or concerns in regards to that. And I believe we're going to address that by appointing a representative to the, to that group, for the task force, to meet on July twenty-first. The end of the environmental report. Now we have a special request. We have a special request from Nicole McGrath, Pilates instructor, a village resident, currently lives on Fifteen Mill Street. What, she would like to, a special request for Pilates and yoga class to be held at the American Legion Park at the Rockefeller Lane entrance. Number of people will be approximately five to 10 people in attendance, and they would be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM on the days July eighteenth, July twentieth, July twenty-fifth, and July twenty-seventh. She had submitted her insurance to meet her standard, her village standard, and would like us to approve a yoga class at the bar.
Can I say that?
I'll make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve Nicole McGrath to hold a Pilates class on a date mentioned from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM at the American Legion Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion? So carry. No, I'm not here? I'm sorry. Would you like to say anything?
Nope, I was just here just in case you had any questions.
Come on up if you would like to say something.
No, no, you're fine, I, I actually just thought it might be good to match a piece with a name or...
You notice you're not as tall as Tom Crane.
Yeah, no, I recently moved to the village of Rhinebeck last August, so new to the area, and actually just looking to start my business, but it's a little tricky with kids being out of school, and the people I'm targeting are moms, and, you know, older, so I thought it would be fun to do something in the park, 7:00 AM, so hopefully they can get back before summer camp starts and all of that, and generate interest before the fall. And it's around the block from my house, so I just thought it would be a nice thing to do in the summertime. Get people moving.
I think, thank you.
So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
We're now into other business, countywide shared services summary. The board and the public, I think, knows we've addressed this on several times. The, we've been participating as a group of, for Duchess County, on all the mayors and supervisors of Duchess County, participating in a countywide shared services initiative. We've been meeting, there have been several meetings, the next meeting is going to be on July eighteenth, where we go forward with what I think the final plan is by recommendation from our county executive, Mark Mollinera. But as a village, we worked towards and work with, and I'd like to thank Karen and John Fenton and Mike Wolf for helping us to put together all of the financial data and information that we submitted to the county for the six items that we thought would be of benefit to the village of Rhinebeck as a potential cost savings if approved by the county. And I'm going to summarize those, they were due on July seventh, and they were submitted to the county on June thirtieth. Number one was a county salt purchasing cooperative. This is participation with a county salt bid. We currently pay $75 per ton, and we purchase from the town of Rhinebeck, and the town of Rhinebeck is also participating in this. And we estimate that we use 424 tons per year, so it's up to the county to come back to us and say if they can beat that price for it. County shared paving materials, and this would be a county bid on hot mixed asphalt. We all buy from our same source, but if the county goes together and collectively collects and goes out for major bids, we can hopefully get a better price, rather than all of us using the municipal rate, they would look, they would work on a better municipal rate for us. We would, we asked for two items under the cost quota, one was the binder, which is the base coat. We currently pay $55 a ton, and we estimate that we would use 1,680 tons per mile. And going forward, our plan is to try to accomplish within our budget to do approximately a mile of road per year. And along with that would be a top coat on top of that, which is $65 a ton, it's a little bit finer material, and we estimate, but use less because it's a thinner coat, 1,410 tons per mile that we would use. So again, we've asked the county to, we would like to participate in a countywide bid to improve that cost for us. Also, item three is a county highway equipment rental program. There was a list of probably fifty items on this, on the list, but we scrubbed the list down to the items that are important to the village that we would use. One is the catch basin cleaner, which we use approximately two days per year. A jet water associated with it, that's two days per year. A soil screener, which we could use three days a year, but probably not every year. A broom sweeper, we would use five days per year. And a 10-wheel dump truck, which would use for the blacktop delivery. And we would use three duck, three trucks, three days per year if we continue forward with that plan. So again, we've given them costs associated with that, and they're going to go out collectively, come back and give a proposal. Countywide, or fourth, county electronic outreach system. The county currently has a program called Duchess Delivery. Duchess Delivery is a internet-based, telephone-based system that allows our residents to sign up for exactly what kind of notices they would like to receive, and they could receive them via email versus text or multiple ways, and we could participate in that program. There is a fee for us to participate in the county, it's $1,000 to set up, and then there's a $1,500 per year maintenance fee. But if we want to get into notifying, you know, have a delivery system similar to like maybe what the school uses, which goes out with dates, it says schools closed, there's no closing, we could also have a collective group of people, and we'd say, we're replacing a, we have a water main break on Platte, for instance, and we could group things and say, everybody on Platte would be notified in whatever method they chose, whether to be notified at this very easily versus having to knock on doors and verbally tell each other to be able to do it. But there's all sorts of advantages. I looked at other programs, and other programs to purchase could range up to $5,000, and then we would also have to hire somebody to maintain it and run it, or manage it within our existing staff. We thought this program would be beneficial to us, it depends on what the county could do in terms of us being able to use Duchess Delivery. There are also the county procurement specialists. This is focused on using cost avoidance instead of using engineers. Currently, when we go with a bid proposal, we go out to our engineers, and we ask our engineers to come up with a bid perspective for us as part of the process. We get, we pay for that, we pay for that privilege. They're, they want to offer a program that they would do that process for us, based on collective bargaining with putting the bid process together. Again, there's no, they have not attached a fee for this, we're waiting for that, but if we use our average for the last couple of years in terms of what we've been spending on engineering fees to do similar type studies, we've been spending on the average close to $50,000 to do this, it's quite substantial. So I'm looking forward to see if the county could save us money there. And last but not least is a county motor vehicle repair process. Currently, we have 11 vehicles, this has to deal with vehicles smaller than our dump trucks. It's pickup trucks, our police cars, and anything, basically anything smaller than a pickup truck, of 11 vehicles. We estimate that we spend today going out to third-party $10,000 a year just on this basic maintenance, which we do. Because we have an engineer, but there is not always available, we have a mechanic, I should say, an engineer mechanic is available to do it, but we end up putting a lot of it out to outside sources to get basic maintenance done. So we're asking to see if we could participate in that county. And that was the countywide shared services, I'll give you an update after our next meeting on the eighteenth. Great, sorry to take this long. Next, we have Greg Swanzik here to visit us tonight, who has also spoke to the town and would like to come to the village on a resolution to adopt an application for the state funds applied for by the Winnieke Land Trust. Thank you for your patience.
It's my first time at one of your meetings, which is good to see how things work. This is, this is just a map of what I'm about to talk about.
Thompson Mazeroa Park.
Yes, that's where Spencer is. And so what we're, what we did was we had a feasibility study that was done by Chase and Engineering. Looked at trail feasibility for Hyde Park, Rhinebeck, and Red Hook. We had some money from the Land West Lines to do that in Greenway. They did a great study, they basically took, looked at the whole region, conceptively looked at what, how we can connect communities together with multi-use, multi-modal trails, non-motorized. And so it was narrowed down to a few, to nineteen different projects, that were obviously just a very small portion overall, but were the ones that were most feasible. They did some cost, looked at costs, some unit costs, and the best estimates for costs of conceptual trails. But what it provides for us is a basis for going after grants, really. And the next steps then was the grants is to do the actual design, engineering, permitting, seeker, you know, all the process that it takes to go through. Actually, you know, the end product needs to happen in the future. But, but again, this, this allows us to go for consolidated funding applications this, this July, if we can get the proposals in, July twenty-eighth is due. So Winnieke Land Trust, I should have introduced myself, I guess, more, I'm executive director for Winnieke Land Trust. And, and so we as the applicant to, we're on the grant gateway, we can go to the state for funding. And so we're looking to do this for various communities. We're honing in on Rhinebeck, and that's what I've got in front of you, and we're also in Red Hook. Red Hook has, I do have a resolution from the village and the town in, for this, for the project in that town, for a trail that will go from the village toward Barr. And so, so I'm working on that proposal, this is a proposal that we're suggesting for here. And it is completely consistent with the master, the comprehensive, master plan for, you know, for the town, I know, and, and, you know, consistent with the village initiatives, and it certainly allows the village center to be connected with, more strongly with the park. It sets a stage for the Empire State Trail connections too. Empire State Trail, which is a governor's initiative, comes, it goes over the walkway over Hudson to Hudson County, up the other side, and comes back over the Kingston Rhine Cliff Bridge and goes north from here, so we're kind of bypassed. And so we're looking for steps that we need to take that can allow us to connect to that as well. Our proposal, and, you know, this feasibility study was finished in April, end of April, and so I've been working quickly to see if I can make the deadline on July twenty-eighth. So I understand that, you know, how, how russia's may feel, the people certainly... The thing is that this resolution that is required for Hudson Parks Recreation, Strong Preservation Funding for Parks Development Grant, which this would be for, is a requirement for the grant for us to be able to apply, coming from municipalities where the, where the project would take place. It's not an endorsement of the project itself so much as endorsement of the concept and the application by Winnieke Land Trust to apply for these funds. So anyway, to the map, it shows you in the red, some of the, there are four different segments that we're looking at. Sixty-five hundred feet of trail, it would be, in concept, it would be crushed stone with a layer of item four, item four stonedust, and that would be the... And that would be the sort of kind of surface eight foot wide. So it would become something that would be non-motorized and not just for pedestrians, but also for bicycles. And even in some, some areas, this is, worked very well for our questions as well. We're looking at different stakeholders. We've had a number of meetings about this. And we're also, you know, for Winnieke Land Trust, we're able to form easements with private landowners. Some of these are private landowners, so we're still in conversations with them. But an easement is required because it needs to be in perpetuity since it's public funds that would improve, improve, make the improvements. So that's, in a nutshell, it's four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars on that order is the request to parks and a hundred fifty-five thousand would be the match. So in this would be not any, there would be no financial implications for the village in this. And the resolution is, doesn't commit you to anything in particular other than you just saying that this, this is the kind of thing that does fit, you know, what people would like to see in the community. So, well, let me know if, do I, are there more questions that you have about that?
Well, I would just like to make a statement because I know, because we've met and we've talked about this. I think it's, what's nice about this, this proposal is targeting towards linking basically sections of our community together, which is really nice. And it allows a way for people to also interact to other areas, whether it be the gardens or Thompson-Mazarela Park, but also to get into the village center from these, from these outlying areas. So from that aspect, it brings, it brings people into the village from outlined areas on non-road surfaces, via trail surfaces. I thought that was a great concept to link these together. And the other thing is, I believe you already have a resolution passed by the town. Is that correct?
We're still working on that.
You're still working on?
Yeah, yeah. And if you like, I could explain more about that. This is interesting because the town owns, one of the routes is through the cemetery. I met with the cemetery board members and we walked, we looked at, you know, this could follow the existing road. That's the way to do it, you know, we're not disrupting anything. And then it's a five-hundred-foot stretch down over the hill and over into the park. So it, it, it really is, is doable. It is feasible, it's doable. It doesn't really affect any of the operation of the cemetery at the moment. But it still raises concern because the town owns the cemetery. So it's, it's more than just endorsing a proposal, it's also, there are elements of it that are implicated, you know, there's implications because they own that property. None of this, part of that is in the village. So that's why I need to come to you is that the municipality in which the project takes place, we need an endorsement from. But in that case, not only is some of it in the town, so I'd be looking for endorsement to send to for the project, but above and beyond that, more conversation with them because they own the property too. And so of course, for them, then the questions of maintenance and so forth, you can imagine the questions that would occur. And so we're working through those as well. But I think that we will have a resolution by the end of the month, but we'll have, we'll have another special meeting later on in the month. And I'll be speaking with, I'm working with Chauncey Walker, who's on the board, and Warmer Plamsky. So I'll be meeting with them this Friday. So we're kind of working out the details of if there's a resolution, what would, how it would be worded, you know, to have, you know, additional concerns that go beyond, you know, this request to, to, to you.
So one more comment. One of the things I asked Greg to do was to meet with the planning department, only the aspect of where these plans intersect into, especially the one at the upper end, at the middle of the Complimental Park, if it comes into the middle of the village, just to make sure coincides with their long-term plans of how they would want to have people connected. That meeting has been set up, I believe, but unfortunately for us to act on it and pass a resolution would now be too late unless we wanted to wait until this also is a special meeting to make Greg's deadline to get the resolution in. So that is ongoing to have a discussion with our planning department.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back if, if that's how, if that's how you prefer to go. Yeah, absolutely.
Just curious, so I see red and green trails. Looks like the red trails are the existing Thompson-Mazarela trails.
The green ones, right. Oh, the red ones, you're right.
So that would be changing those basically moaned, what's now just kind of mowed and trampled down into a path with cinders on top of it, basically?
Not for this project, although what, I think in the long run, what is the best thing to do is to have a consistent surface for a path. And this would, so certainly, and actually, if there was an interest in that, it's something that we could look at extending the impact of this work as it's taking place. But if you look at it in the gardens, that's, those are trails that Winnieke maintains, but they are, they're really encroached and they're really not usable right now up at the top end. So we are looking at doing it there, where we have, we have conversations with private landowners, which you may know which, who they are, but, but where we're still having those conversations, that's why it's a kind of a tricky thing in public meetings, because we're still having some conversations. Likewise, with the matching funding, I don't want my, I have, it's complicated for me to name the funders because we'll be presenting proposals to them for matching funding. I already have indications that they're favorable to it, but that doesn't mean it's in place yet. So, you know, I hope you understand that kind of the sense of nature of these conversations, especially in a tight shot timeline for us.
I think for the public's interest, for those watching PANDA who may not have accessibility to seeing this map, I think it's important to note that one of them is, one of the trails comes off of Aster, which is just below our wastewater treatment plant, comes across Aster and joins into the Thompson-Mazarela Park on, on Rhinecliff Road. There's another trail off of the Thompson-Mazarela Park that goes basically through the woods and comes right down into the backside, almost close to where I think Mirabou is being planned. So it will come, intersect right into the middle of the village. And the third trail is on the south side of town, off the lower section of Thompson-Mazarela Park and intersects down right off of Asher in that, in that, on the opposite side.
That's the road that goes through the cemetery we're talking about. Yeah, so it's, that's all-town land, both sides of the park, the bus, the bus.
All-town, but these are the way to connect people into the village from these, from these things.
And physically, they, they are doable. All of those are doable. I was out, I've been out walking them and we, of course, you know, Chase and Engineering helped put together the feasibility study. So we feel confident about the ability to do them. But, and the nice thing about land trusts being involved is we can work with individual private, private landowners, we can establish easements, we can help public dollars flow into projects that is a public amenity. And an easement would be required to do that. So if there's a willing landowner, you know, we can, we can also pull in public dollars to make, make an improvement that everybody benefits by. That's the idea with this.
So I'm on the Thompson-Mazarela Park Committee, so these are trails that are already planned there.
Those, those exist.
Right. Well, some of it exists in final form. And so you're, you're saying that the rest of this is going to be done in like, like with the stone dust or?
Of all, of all the ones in, in the park?
Yeah.
No. I mean, well, I'm not at this moment.
Well, I know, but there's plans to do that in other sections. There's only a little bit of it done right now. But the plan is to continue that. So are you saying that your money would help continue that?
In this existing proposal, it wouldn't necessarily, unless, unless we find a way to, if we're awarded a grant, if we're fortunate enough to have that happen, we certainly will look for ways to extend the impact of that grant. And if we could spill it into, you know, doing some more work in the park, absolutely we'd love to do that. Because what we, you know, for my part, if we can have a consistent surface, at least even some of the major corridors that connect things together, if not the whole thing, at least pick the right one that would connect through up to Star Library and go beyond, then that would be an excellent thing. Because users need consistent surfaces. So, you know, so if someone is going to bike it, you want to be able to do it all the way through, not just have to stop and turn around.
Some of this goes through the woods and there's no, there's nothing there, it's just the dirt, the dirt.
It's a steep slope too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good if you got.
We would love to extend this.
That would be good. If you got that four hundred fifty-five thousand.
I think, I think we can find ways, because a significant portion of what we're looking for is volunteer assistance in this. And it's, it's more than twenty-four dollars an hour is the allowed rate per hour for volunteer time. So that can add up pretty fast and provide a good match and also provide services that really help. But we'll also be up raising funds to see how much can we leverage in doing a project like this. So if we say our max is a hundred fifty-five, if we can do more than a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, we'll do it. We'll pour it on to see if we can extend this project and have more of an impact. And the, the goal is to do more, more connections than this. We would like to connect up to the Empire State Trail, up to Red Hook, out to, over to Rhinecliff, down to High Park. So there's a lot in this feasibility study that is looking at all those other connections as well. And what's at the center of it, actually Thompson, Mazarello.
Mazarello.
Mazarello Park is critical to that. It is a central place for a lot of those things, if they can happen. But it's exciting for us, but it's a lot of work.
And so just, and who, it's the Rhinebeck Park Connections Project is basically, that's what you're looking to establish. And then who, what representatives are on that or in that? Who's on, who constitutes that?
Well, this is something that's formulating right now, and certainly it involves, in this case, the cemetery committee, the park committee, a number of different groups. We'd need to be.
Yeah, Thompson-Mazarello Park Committee.
Well, I'm just getting somebody from the village as well.
Right here. The group isn't formulated yet, but it's, we've had conversations with individuals from various groups.
Have you been talking to Sally Mazarello?
Yeah.
I believe I have. She's a good representative.
She's President Emeritus, you know, I see Sally.
As somebody who likes to walk, Thompson-Mazarello Park is a great idea.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do adopt the resolution to allow the Winnicke Land Trust to go forward and apply for these grants. I think it's an important step in making this happen.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying? Any other discussion? Given that, I would like to read the resolution into record. Whereas Winnicke Land Trust is applying to the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation for grants under the Environmental Protection Fund and Recreational Trail Program for trails projects to be located in the Village of Rhinebeck, a site located within the territorial jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees and whereas a requirement under the rules of these programs said nonprofit corporations must obtain their approval and endorsement for the governing body of the municipality in which the project will be located. Now therefore be resolved by this august body that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck hereby does approve and endorse the application by the Winnicke Land Trust for the grants under the Environmental Protection Fund and the Recreational Trail Program for a trail project known as the Rhinebeck Village and Town Park Connections Project and located within this community. On favor?
Aye.
We did it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We wish us luck.
And we'll be, we're trying to get around to talk to everyone about this. We want this seeker and all permitting archaeological study. There'll be a lot of interaction.
To be involved or planning departments as part as you go through that process.
Absolutely.
David, you're next. Don't go.
Yay.
I want to give to somebody a brief summary. Quite some time ago, our village clerk, Pat Kuhn, and I started on a study to study our basically fourteen-year-old telephone system in the village that we're currently using. The system that was, that we currently have was put in in two thousand and four, and it really is technology, technologically out of date by a lot of, a lot of, a lot of reasons. We interviewed at the time eight different companies as a proposal. We narrowed it down to the top three, and then we narrowed it down through to one, which is Superior Telephone, which is here tonight to me. Basically, each one of the proposals that we review cover the same aspects in terms of what they would deliver, and that's in the summary page for you guys to review, and David will also tell us, tell us about briefly. But basically Superior Telephone, please present the project proposal for designing it, will patient, a telecommunications system capable of being networked to additional locations consisting of the latest voice-over IP technology, providing voice mail-to-mail integration, call routing, conferencing, and centralized management. So it is in fact a complete overhaul of our existing system, but it makes use of a lot of the infrastructure that is there. As Dave will talk, it comes with it a three-year on labor, which is normally two years, but they've granted us additional year on all labor associated with it. A five-year warranty on the equipment will be also be included. The net, one of the key advantages to this, besides some of the features, it gives us the administration interface to our own telephone network, which allows us to, without going through our phone network provider, to make changes real-time. For instance, if either one of the board says, I don't want to miss this important call, each one of the board members will now have an extension, and by means of that extension, you could then have that extension transferred to your mobile device or to your home device or any phone that you choose to do that, or you could choose not to, to receive calls. But if you do choose to get that call, you would then return the call, but it would not be coming from your phone. You'd be on your phone, but the recognition would not be your private cellphone number that is being used. So the one advantage of this is not giving out our cellphones, which we do, we do frequently, which we haven't considered a problem, but now when somebody talks to you, they know that they're talking to somebody in the Village of Rhinebeck. It also would extend that same privilege to people in our water plant who are out working on jobs and our way to the plant would not miss calls, our wastewater plant who would be outside, they could receive calls based on their phone, as well as our highway department, which is out. They would have that same feature available to them and therefore not be missing calls. That would be instrumental to getting in contact with them, either by somebody from the village office here or from a concerned resident that needed something done right away. So there's significant features, that's one of the two top features. It does come, we looked at not only purchasing, but leasing, pro and con of the beach as a result of actual review. We really decided that the purchase price is the best way to go for the long-term. This system will buy us ten to fifteen years, you know, in technology, so it could last as long as our last phone system did, and it also gives us the ability to make upgrades and improvements to our phone system, real-time versus now we can't. It's almost impossible to change our existing phone structure. So I keep going on and on about the pluses. I'm going to turn it over to David to talk about it. The price tag on this in terms of commitment and buying is thirteen thousand, last time here, on your last page, was thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and nine cents. It is over our budgeted amount, which was put into the budget of ten thousand dollars, but there are some cost-saving things we can do to reduce that if need be. So I'd like to turn over to David, who is president of Superior to.
Five minutes, because you guys have worked way too hard. And it's not for self-interest. I've had the privilege of working with the village, because that antique phone system that you presently have, we put in fourteen years ago. I also had the privilege of working with Sergeant Dunn and his team with the new building. So bringing the technology alive and putting it to work for you and updating, which has been done with Pat, we've been working together like a year and a half on this project. This is nothing new. Getting the internet services extended here at the village hall as well as your other facilities, so that we can accommodate and deploy a VoIP solution. Calls will actually be coming into the town hall and then being routed over the internet to the highway and the pertinent locations. So there is cost savings involved. There's also the ability to tweak the phone bill dramatically in the sense of, well, we paid for a phone line today, and we'll pay for tomorrow. That will be part of that process. The mobile extension where it can call you, you can answer it, you can actually transfer that call back to the mayor at his desk from your cellphone. I mean, I'm talking about, wow. So I don't want to bore you with all the technical stuff. We have unlimited training. We don't need a year of additional warranty of labor to you because you're one of our favorite customers. We had that on the New York State OGS contract since two thousand and four. We were re-awarded that in two thousand and fourteen. The pricing that we have in this is exactly what that pricing is. For example, they, it's got to be the manufacturer and then the vendor that provides the service and be approved and all that process. So we've been fortunate to do that. We have seven thousand present customers. I'm not going to bore you with the details. Most latest, May and Pat, we did their facility, East Fishkill, Fishkill, Village of Fishkill. I think the list is just dramatically long. So the deployment would start here at the village hall, and then we would then move on to the highway and to the other locations. The process would probably take three days here and then a day each of the other facilities. And then, you know, extensive training goes on during that process. Can't learn everything at once. But when we program, if you look at the phone on that desk there, if we program the phone to say mayor on it and we push it and we get them, we make it simple. If you would pass that around. I do want to reference in your folder, two minutes left, there's a little cloud illustration here, and that just gives you a sense of how we're doing this over the Time Warner pipe. Spectrum's then upgraded all your locations. We're going to be working with your IT company because they're going to be creating a virtual private secure network between your water department, your treatment center, the highway department, and the town hall here. So that's how this communication will happen from the hub here at the village hall to those locations. So this tries to just put it in a little more, less technical and more gentle terms. Please do, if you'd really like to get bored, you can go to our website. We have more PDFs and technical documents and so forth. But I'd like to open it up. Questions?
Well, I guess my question is, how do you find the divide, how do you find Warner Spectrum in terms of their lines? We're dependent upon their infrastructure for this.
So we, with the upgrade that's been implemented, it's the best we can get from I'm on, right? Commercial grade. This is not home owner grade, this is commercial grade. So that's a three fifty by fifty.
And, okay, but I'm, but like, is that, so I know that like at home, if there's a lot of cable traffic, my internet connection slows down. You have a dedicated.
So on a commercial grade, it operates.
Okay.
You're not sharing services every time they're inherited, excuse my progression on the street.
Sure.
And yes, so in fact, we are relying on the carrier. I mean, we've got some redundancy built in here, so that we can also capture that call here if the link went down to the highway, right? We can, you know, keep that call here in the building, bring it to an operator, have a backup plan for those types of outages that potentially happen when power issues, as you mentioned earlier. What are your complaints?
One another feature is sometimes we do get calls, and it's important to note that we keep a record of those calls. This system, today we don't have that ability unless we write it down, nor do we have a record of the actual call itself. This system gives us the ability to automatically retain that call for future reference if we need it.
That's really your voice van. So if somebody calls and you do a voicemail or I'm having a conversation, goes to my email, my voicemail, which also goes to your smartphone, to your inbox as an email, right? Everybody understand that? So if a message comes in from me, it would then go to my email at my office, it's going to send it to my smartphone, so I'll be able to pull it right up right here thirty seconds later, right? So I can keep that in my Outlook forever. I can put it in the file. You know, there's a great number of ways to handle that, the management of. What we forgot here is we didn't talk about the conference bridge, which we did add.
I was going to bring that up.
Ah, you can go ahead.
Well, I mean, we did add in the conferencing feature into our proposal. It was something that we do not have today. I don't know how much we would use conferencing if we need it, but it is a.
The eight-port conference.
Yes. So it's a one thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollar addition to this if we thought conferencing was also a proposed feature for us to add. We kept it into the menu of offerings that I would defer to the board to say that if you wanted to save some money, that would be one of the items I would suggest that we could eliminate for now and then decide in the future how we want if we want to add that later on. Just stay more in line with what our budget proposal was for this system.
The conference bridge, not interrupting mayor, but the conference bridge lets you do a great number of things. Pat could arrange a conference. It could be with a highway person, water person, the mayor, somebody calling in from E C or whatever the scenarios are that are all involved. You know, it's five o'clock, she sends out the email, here's the password, right? We've all done this with conference bridges. So it goes out to everybody, it's an email. You all call into the town hall. You can have eight people in a conference bridge at one time. It's balanced. When we conference two calls together, we got, you know, frontier voltage here and frontier voltage here, and they don't conference too well, especially the guy in Chicago, right? He can't barely hear anything. So in an amplified, balanced conference system of, it's your thousand-dollar deal there, it actually balances all the conversations out, so everybody effectively hears each other perfectly. And Pat or whoever can send these, you know, email blasts out for certain arrangements. Hopefully saving some time and distance and driving and all that efficiency.
I think it would facilitate engineering meetings or discussions that we have today. It would not replace where we could get together as a board, right? So you could not have a conference call and have three of us on the conference call and have that, have that quorum without having to be called a meeting. So conference calls as a meeting would still be the same thing and have to be public notice. But we can use it for engineering or linking up, you know, talking to water and wastewater or water and highway, you know, to coordinate, you know, the construction of our replacement of a water main, to make it simple and get enough parties involved to solve that, as an example. But that, I'll leave that to you guys to also weigh in on. But this is it. We spent a lot of time, Pat did, Pat and I did a lot of work to studying this, and we really want to recommend Superior after reviewing all of them for a lot of reasons, the familiarity, the closeness to us, and their ability to change. Some of the other systems, although they're same, were a little bit more complicated. We want to keep things as simple as possible, but still get the feature, and we felt that Superior delivered that for us.
Thank you for your time. Is there any other questions?
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept a bid from Superior for implementation of a phone system in the village to connect the village and the outlined buildings, which are our light departments.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
We'll discuss.
Aye.
Aye. Can we discuss? Discuss.
Here we go. Yeah, and now we'll go to the discussion. Now, and now we're about, now discussion.
Okay.
Are you suggesting we take the eleven twenty-nine off it for now?
Make it that as an option if you want to stay closer to helping to, with our budget, that would be an option, which we could remove and have not an impact on the overall infrastructure of the system, yes.
Can that be installed at some time?
Absolutely. It's a license in it and a daughter board. So you load the license on, then you want to buy the license in, you slide the daughter board in, and away you go.
One of the things we've also done is we've already put in the high-speed connections to highway water and wastewater, so that we did last year as part of our infrastructure improvement. So we're already in a process to be able to implement this, it doesn't slightly outoccur in any additional costs.
And you actually saved money here at the village hall by doing that and getting twice as the, amazingly.
Can we do internal conferencing? Like if I want to talk to.
Absolutely. And you have, there's so many things. You have duplex speaker phones, you can talk and listen simultaneously and there's no clipping and all that. Very high level.
Oh. No, no, my caller. I'm talking to the mayor, I want to get John on the phone.
We can do that. Right now, it's just, we almost have literally hang up and call each other separately, now we can just conference everybody and do that.
Up to eight parties. In turn, that those are not balanced on the whole, so the conference bridge is certainly a step above that.
Gotcha.
Because it sends out the notification, the password, the time of the day, all those things.
Right. I'm just looking for a person to fly.
So two people on the fly, easy pick.
Right. And also for our own personnel cellphones, we would then, if we wanted to make a phone call on official business, we then, how does that work?
So you would, very good question. You would call into the town hall, okay? And you would get intercom dial tone and make the outgoing call. So therefore the million-dollar question, so the test question at ten thirty, what caller ID does it show from? The town hall, not yourself, the village hall.
Okay. Town hall maybe.
So we have to call Pat and she took us up?
No, you know.
You do it yourself. You call in, you hit the voicemail, and we're going to give you your respective place to go and.
Because like us, we don't really use these phones.
Right. So you're going to have a virtual extension.
I use my cellphone.
Yeah, I use my cellphone.
Right. So you're going to have a virtual extension, so you call into the town hall, you're going to hit the voicemail, you're going to hit your extension number, you're going to dial nine, and wherever you want to call the person back, and they're going to see calling from the village hall.
And there'll be a record of that call as well.
So we're not, we didn't do call accounting to print that record of that call. So I don't know.
There'll be a record of that call.
I don't, I don't know that it's really in need for the village. You know, if we have one hundred and fifty phones in Fishkill or something like that, they have other needs, more advanced than, but I think your application is. But I do want to thank you for your time.
Sorry, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When did this bid initially come in approximately?
So we started about a year ago, and then it's been, there's been two or three meetings right here.
With you, yes.
Right. You've had thirty probably, but anyway, and then we just did the latest update.
On July sixth.
And is the, is the amount proposed, the total, the thirteen and change, is that the amount that the bid came in at, or was the bid lower?
So that is the amount that the final bid after our meetings and adding the conference bridge and adding the remote phones, the highway, water treatment, sewer. So the first bid probably came in at ten thousand.
It was.
But then we added IP phones for the remote sites, we added a conference bridge, and it turned in from ten to thirteen after two or three meetings. Is that a good answer?
Yes.
So will this help us get, I know that they have walkie-talkies. So we still need the walkie-talkies?
I'm not sure what you use walkie-talkies for. Pat calls the highway guys, Pat calls the water department.
Not really.
We don't, we don't use it, right? Or we don't.
They do use them.
Right.
They like to listen to their chatter, but this would eliminate the need for that.
Certainly if I were the highway super, I could have that call that goes to my IP phone because the mayor transferred it to me, somebody running over to mailbox, and transfer that way to the highway super as if you were in the next room like you do here, right? With the highway button, and I talk to that person in the highway garage, and if they weren't at their desk, if the highway, if the highway super wants to, they can have that phone to what? Or to their cell.
Yeah, they have cell phones, the head department has cell phones.
We think so.
So it's more on, not everybody's going to want to do everything the same, so it's going to be, you know, we're going to have a board member kind of plan, how you guys want to function versus a department head, and I'm certain you'll have some input on all of that.
How much need do you really think we have for the conference? Sorry, how much need do you think we have for the conference bridge at this time?
Just leave it out. I'm more particular about wanting to, you know, keep our costs down as much as possible, you know, and we can always add this feature here if we go forward. We need it.
I mean, has anybody encountered situations where you've really done this?
Only with the engineering department, so it's been hard to get anybody here from having engineering discussion, yet it's the only time, but it's in frequent.
So we.
So made a motion, second discussion. All in favor?
Well, are we talking about taking out the?
Yes, we, I can amend it if you'd like.
I mean, what?
You can make an amendment.
I'd like to amend this without the eleven hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents for the conference capability.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Staying? Carry.
I'll have that updated for you probably tomorrow, worst case, perfect.
And so when do you expect to be able to start, would be able to start implementation?
So that's a good question, and I don't have that answer. That's Cheryl's thing, she manages pretty close schedules, so.
Just that we would like to have enough advance warning to plan.
Sure.
You're familiar with the process.
Of course. I'm thinking it would probably be a month, probably easily, couple, two, three weeks, just to get the commitment.
Yep.
And then, you know, come out and do our cap funding stuff as far as, and lay out the programming, those type of pertinent things, but I would have to really check on Cheryl as far as.
Okay.
But what would be your preferred time?
I'm going to prefer to, I don't believe there's an issue with anything, but at least a month, you know, give us time to make sure we've all worked.
Right, because the IT company has to be VPN set up and.
Well, I think they're available already, but we could check on that.
Excellent. Again, thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, court, hazard mitigation. We need to go over this, guys. We talked about this last time and it keeps coming back, not last time, but several months ago, and the issue with the hazard mitigation was, we had, we had said we all wanted to do it, we had everybody lined up to do it, but we did not pass the resolution that said we would adopt the hazard mitigation plan as so done. So we have a hazard mitigation plan that we have submitted to the county. We missed the resolution, and they now want us to pass a resolution which is here. So that's the only difference to what they're asking, but I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Village of Rhinebeck has worked cooperatively with Dutchess County with assistance of Terratech Incorporated in gathering information and preparing a Dutchess County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan municipal annex, a plan, a copy which is annexed hereto, and whereas Dutchess County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan has been prepared in accordance with Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, and whereas Dutchess County and the Village of Rhinebeck are units of government that have afforded the citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input into the plan and the actions in the plan, and whereas Dutchess County and the Village of Rhinebeck has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years, and now therefore be resolved that this governing body approves and adopts the attached Dutchess County Hazard Mitigation Plan Municipal Annex as this jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan and resolves the executive actions of this plan. So any question? I would like to make a motion that we adopt the Hazard Mitigation Resolution Plan.
What are the actual, that word?
So this was reviewed several months ago in our meeting.
Right.
We could bring that back up if you chose, we could suspend this and then go back through that review process again, which is, which was a ten-page document.
I don't remember the document, right?
Yep.
Right.
And we did, we voted to, we just sent to a formal resolution.
Exactly.
Right. We had a couple of questions.
We did everything but adopt this resolution.
Gotcha. Okay.
I moved it, I'm sorry.
Here, I moved a second.
A second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Any other discussion? Carry. Thank you. Okay, of course, minutes approval. You all have received your minutes in email for May twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen, June thirteenth, twenty seventeen, and June twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. If you had a chance to review, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt those three meeting minutes as published.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Any other discussion? Carry. Thank you. Correspondents. The first one on the list, I just varied my agenda.
Claudia.
Claudia. First one was from the Reinbeck Chamber, and good afternoon. This is a very formal email, and I'm going to summarize this because they want to ask us to explore the idea of loading zones, similar to that in New York City, to have streets and have sections of street reserved for loading and unloading, for instance, from seven A M. to eleven A, eleven A M., you know, and so forth. So they expect more activity as, you know, we have more businesses within the village to be able to take advantage of this. My comment on this is, this is all kind of addressed when we adopt a building plan or when somebody comes in with a business, the building planning department does address how, where, and when loading is supposed to occur, and I believe it becomes more of an enforcement issue rather than a planning issue. But that's my comment.
Well, I'd like to comment on this because my company is getting parking tickets along with all the other companies. And so I talked to Pete about it, and Pete says, Pete recommends that we do create loading zones, because what he says was, when the planning board allows, like all these restaurants come in, they think, only think of parking for the customers. They don't think of parking where the, where the delivery trucks are going to go. So it is a problem with parking for the delivery trucks. They double park because there's no place to park, so they're getting tickets. Now, some of the delivery companies are putting the price of the ticket, not my company, on the invoice for the restaurant to pay. So now some of the restaurant owners are starting to get mad about this. So you might hear more about this in the future. But Pete, if he was here, he would, he would back me up on this, that, you know, the planning board and I, saying anything bad about the planning board, they all work hard, but they don't think about the delivery areas for these trucks, where they're going to go.
I mean, I also talked to Pete, and I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I also disagree in terms of the planning because, you know, when it's adopted-
It's not me saying, it's Pete saying. Not me.
No. Pete is also aware of what the planning board tells the place where they're supposed to park, and they're not really obeying the law, the rules.
There's, there's no parking areas for delivery trucks. There's none. I mean, if they can find a spot in the street where three cars are not parked, then they can park their truck there. That's what it takes, about two or three car spots on the street. And there's never, you know, there's no spots for delivery trucks.
And my concern is I don't want to, I'm worried about further restricting parking.
And I've talked to business owners about that, and they're concerned about that, too, that they don't want to take any more parking spots away for their, from their regular customers. But if they start getting charged for these parking tickets, they might change their mind. And Pete, Pete told me about some businesses getting charged for the parking tickets. I'm not, this is not coming out of me, but Pete, because that's what we were talking about out there when you saw me. I was out there with him for about a half hour the other day. So it is a problem. I don't know what to do. I don't know what we can do.
Would you need more than one loading zone?
Yeah, probably three.
Multiple.
Pete even has some suggestions where he put them. He's not, he's not out there to give out, he's not trying to bust anybody's chops.
Well, let's talk, let's talk to Pete.
Yeah.
Further.
All right, so we can table this and bring that back after Pete's set up a discussion?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good idea.
About this.
Okay. The next correspondent is from Cheryl Reifenberg on the speed on Montgomery Street. I've been in multiple correspondents with Cheryl, and we've addressed this with our police, and not attached to this is a thank you note from Cheryl thanking us for improving and working, improving these, I said improving, but working towards maintaining the speed limit on Montgomery down past the hospital. One of the things we also asked the police department to do is to put up our sign, radar sign, and take a record of that so we know what's going on, and that will be set up sometime in the future. But we have increased the patrols on Montgomery, and it has been effective, and a thank you note has come from Cheryl's resolve of that correspondence with her. And then the John Vasco proposed angry, which I've already read into the record as part of the internal committee. And did any personnel issues? Any public comment?
I do have some. Thank you. This is way outside of the village, right?
Oh, really?
I see my address.
Yeah. Sorry. They're personally addressed, I didn't notice.
Chris Dino.
As it says, my name's Ted French, six, seven, eight, nine, and entitled is Genocide by Skeleton, and that's a title given by one of the investigators in the forced organ harvesting in China. Their updated research concludes that China's hospitals transplant between sixty thousand and one hundred thousand vital human body organs each year, but China has no organ donation program in effect. Here in the U S, with the most sophisticated organ transplant system in the world, a patient can wait up to three years for matching organ to become available. In China, though, waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant terrorist in China, including modern nurses, can arrange a specific date for their operation, which effectively means that someone will be killed on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo in China to donate organs after death, so that's the source of all these organs. The translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year being killed for organs. Most of these prisoners conscious are fundamental practitioners, but also Tibetans, leaders, and health questions. They are routinely blood tested and their organs examined while held in Chinese forced leotards, detention centers, and black jails. In nineteen ninety-four regulation, ironically, decrees that they any organs become a property of the state. On June thirteenth last year, the U S House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution three four three, which quote, "convents the practice of state session for organ harvesting in China," quotes quote. The European Parliament has also passed similar regulations. This has been happening for over seventy years, but it's still a deadly science on this issue, and that is why I stand before you, the elected and respected representatives of the community, to look at the heavy burden of this genocide as enormous throughout the house. China is total control of its own media and way beyond. So it really comes down to this type of word of mouth and the goal that's happening. Many of its dedicated researchers have gathered an enormous amount of data from current and archaic hospital websites, medical journals, local media reports, telephone surveys, and other evidence of eight hundred and sixty-five hospitals that perform organ transplants. Some books have been written, and documentaries have been produced for comprehensive information slaved that package for your attention. Now, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And this is our regular meeting. I do not have anything for executive session unless any of the board does. Any of it?
No.
Do we need to set our-
Yeah, oh, we need to, yes, we need to talk about- We have an August meeting. We need, there's conflicts, conflicts for the August meeting. Normally scheduled meeting would be on August eighth.
And you're not going to be there?
No.
No, I can't be there.
You can be there.
I can do the fifteenth.
I think the last time we met, we thought about talking about the fifteenth.
Yeah, I think I might be gone then, too.
Are you going to be done the week?
Yeah, because my wife's, there's a couple weeks off. Can we do it the first week? Can we move it up?
August first.
I'm away.
So what about another day, other, so these are week blockouts? Is that what we're looking at? Not daily, not day blockouts or week blockouts?
Yeah, basically, I've gone from the first to the thirteenth or so.
So you're available the week of the fourteenth?
Yeah. Only-
The week of the fourteenth? You got a question?
I'm questionable. The only thing is the zoning initiative, you know, I won't be here for that. But if you guys have a form, you have a form. It should be all teed up by then.
The only thing, we then move it into the following week, we get a twenty, twenty-first. Any issue with the twenty-first? It gets us close to our next monthly meeting, but we can do this.
I would just do it the week before and then see if I, if I'm here, I'm here.
Give it bricks.
I'm here the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I'm good.
All right, so first position is to move the August meeting from August eighth to August fifteenth. Okay, same time. All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to close the board meeting for July eleventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Thank you.